Thank you, Mr. Christ.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Scouton. Aloha.
Aloha. I'll try to be somewhat quiet. I'm trying to not disturb the rest of my guests here at the, in the immediate, my immediate vicinity, but I'm glad you can hear me. I'm glad you can see me.
Yes, yes. Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. I look forward to the briefings today.
Evan, do we have Commissioner Rogers on Zoom yet? Terrific. Okay. I usually wait till it says 8:30 in front of me. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, November 10th, Washington County Board of Commissioners work session. I'm Catherine Harrington, Chair of the Board of Commissioners, and here with me through the magic of the Internet is Vice Chair, Commissioner Scouton. Thank you for joining us from Hawaii. I appreciate that you're joining us while you're on vacation. Commissioner Jerry Willie, Commissioner Roy Rogers, and Commissioner Pam Treese.
Yeah, at 6:30 this morning, Hawaiian time.
Oh, my goodness. I'd still be looking at the inside of my eyelids. Well, before we kick off Board and Leadership Communication, let's talk a little bit about COVID-19 and where we find ourselves. Governor Brown has included Washington County, Multnomah County, and Clackamas County in a new status, one that's called pause. So, starting tomorrow for the next two weeks, we are all being asked to redouble our efforts in order to reduce the further spread of this coronavirus in our communities. What that means is we're asked as employers, so every business, to have as many employees working from home as possible, and Ms. Angie will speak about that in a moment, pausing all visitation to long-term care facilities that take place indoors in order to protect workers, their staff, as well as residents, reducing the maximum restaurant capacity to 50 people total, that includes staff as well as customers, for indoor dining with a maximum party size of six, and continue to encourage outside dining and takeout, reducing the maximum capacity of other indoor activities to 50 people. That includes gyms, fitness organizations, studios, bowling alleys, ice rinks, indoor sports, pools, and museums. We are being asked, each and every one of us, to limit our social gatherings to only those in our household, our direct household, and even at that, no more than six people, particularly if the gathering includes those from outside of your household. This is really important. We've seen quite a jump of cases of coronavirus due to social gatherings. And while I'm a person too, and I dearly miss getting together with friends and loved ones in person, a lot of people have been, rightfully so, but we've been doing so while breaking bread together, eating and drinking beverages, and that has helped fuel the spread of this virus, according to the various epidemiologists, experts. So, you want to reduce those social gatherings, reduce the frequency of them as well, particularly during this next two-week period, and try to keep just those same six people in your social gathering circle over these next two weeks. This is being done because the case rate has gotten exceedingly high. Dr. Seidlinger, our state epidemiologist, shared that our health region, so are the hospitals in the three urban counties, Washington County, Clackamas County, and Multnomah County, provide hospital capacity for over five counties in our area. And we are now in a situation where we have a shortage of staffed intensive care unit ICU beds. They've seen an increase in hospital bed use because of this virus. It is exceedingly important that we all do our part, which is why I am proud of my Commission colleagues for demonstrating that and attending today's meeting through this web application. We need to do this. We need to self-regulate our social gatherings over this important two-week period. If we don't, the consequences are dire. We don't want to overwhelm our healthcare system, and we are close to that, so now is the time for urgent action. I'd like to turn it over now to our Chief Administrative Officer, Tanya Angie, to fill us in on operational plans for us as an employer over these next couple of weeks. And she and our Health Director are available for other Commission questions. Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. We are taking this pause very seriously as a Washington County organization in examining operations and moving as many operations as possible to by appointment only. This is very important to protect public health as well as ensure continuity of Washington government services that our residents depend on. So, please watch for the website, on our website, for further information over the next few days. If community members are looking to access Washington County services, I would encourage you to contact the county before coming in person because we do have many options for accessing those services versus just relying on in-person contact. So, Chair Harrington and Board, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Marnie Kyle is on the line as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing everyone shake their head no. Thank you, Marnie, for joining us, and I would encourage you and your team, should there be information that you wish for us to propagate through our community, to please let us know because we join your team in wanting to be successful with this, this significant time, with this pause. Better for us to do it now and get the course corrected so that we can enjoy the upcoming holidays here, the end of November through December and the turn of the new year. Alrighty, so with that, we'll turn to Board Communications. Who would like to go first? A little bit different because I can't tell. There we go. Commissioner Willie.
I see Dick's got his microphone off too, so he's going to give us a weather report just to rub it in a little bit, I think.
It's, it's just barely comfortably cool here this morning.
But it'll warm up.
Yeah, it's, it's already in the upper 70s here. The weather's been great. The sun's warm. The trade winds are cool. We've seen a couple of historical sites where Captain Cook was, was killed through a series of unfortunate errors that he made when he landed on these islands a second time in his extensive world explorations. We saw where the first king of Hawaii yesterday on a tour, how they, he built a temple which kind of helped launch his, his campaign to unify the islands back in the early 1800s. We went to the Waiko Valley, Pam, and it's, it's an incredibly beautiful spot in the northern part of the big island. And this is day, just the beginning of day three, and we're having a great time, so.
We're great.
And boy, they ran you through a lot of COVID stuff before you get out of this airport. But this is probably about as safe a place as it is right now in the U.S., so glad to be here. And of course, we're taking all the precautions. We're very careful. We wear masks everywhere we go. Thanks.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, well, mine's not nearly as exciting. No historical situation I've got going here, no traveling. Well, at least not till Monday. No, yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with Tanya in the morning and, and Chair Harrington in the afternoon. We covered all of the things that are kind of hitting our calendars over the next couple of weeks. And as you all know, I am departing for Mexico Monday morning very, very early, so I will be out as well. However, I have Zoom capabilities from Mexico, and I believe there'll be a couple of times where I will be on other meetings. I don't plan on attending any Commission meetings, but there's a couple of other meetings I'm going to be in attendance. As I've said before, the two biggest things that I'm working on right now is rural broadband and the salmonberry trail, so pretty exciting stuff. A lot of attention being focused to the rural part of my district right now. And I think I'll have more information as we move ahead on this. As I was telling the Chair yesterday and, and Tanya that when we start talking about rural broadband, it's like we are, to use a good farm term, we are plowing new ground. There's a lot of foundational stuff that needs to be done before we can move ahead, but there is also lots of attention, both statewide and in our tri-county areas, Tullamook County, Katsumah County, and Washington County on, on working this project. So, I'll keep you all up to speed and try not to bore you too much on it, but it is, it's pretty interesting stuff. So, that's all I've got for now.
Anyone else? Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Treese? Nope.
I.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Pam.
Thank you, Roy. I just wanted to mention that I met with the leadership at Home Plate to learn more about their organization. I didn't know as much as I had wanted to, so I learned about Home Plate, and that is it for the, the Commission work. The one thing that I would like to, with one other piece, and that is that I continue to educate myself about the needs of after-school care for Washington County. Right?
Well, this week on Friday, for those of you who are attending, by the way, Dick, it's about 85 right now. It's, it's a little cooler than we'd hoped. It's going to warm up to about 94 here today. So, sorry, you're in a little more cold place, but this Friday morning early is the HBA housing forecast. I think probably many of us will be there. And next week is a really round robin of a lot of meetings going into the following week. We're going to have our meeting on Southwest Corridor, which ought to be very interesting to hear what, what path forward, if any, we have at this point with loss of, you know, of the levy. It's, it's a real challenge. But Doug Kelsey, I think, is going to give a little bit of update.
Turn him up, please.
I'm sorry?
I asked for the volume to be turned up here because I'm having trouble hearing you.
Ah, all right. So, Doug Kelsey, I think, he had a whole bunch of meetings planned. He's canceled them all. It'll be next Monday. There'll be a final on that. We have a WCCC meeting on Monday at noon. We have JPAK later in the week. We have a Region One Act meeting. Pam, as you know, it's a supplemental regarding the step and where we might want to go with that on the following Monday. We've had some meetings in between. And you and I, meaning Pam and I, attended the executive meeting the other day of Work Systems, and they were very complimentary about Washington County and the funds that we've advanced to them, and they wanted to be letting us know, and all of you know, and rest assured that those funds have gone to good use. So, they're very happy. One of our executive members, and I'll stop with this, Travis Stovall, he's a, in a very, very tight race. He's running for mayor of Gresham, and I think there are about 100 votes separating the two candidates. And from what I understand, there's about 170 challenged ballots, so I'm not sure where all that's going to end up. But he's a very good guy, and I know Pam and I work with him on a regular basis, so that's all I have.
Alrighty, I'll just mention that for the rolling agenda, looking ahead, we have a limited number of work weeks between now and the end of the business year. Looking at the Board of Commissioners' agenda, currently, we only have two business meetings planned, December 2nd and then on the 15th. At this juncture, I've asked that we add, excuse me, December 1st and then the 15th. I've asked staff to set up a business meeting on December 8th so that we can try and balance the load a little bit. It may be a somewhat short meeting, but nonetheless, it will make the December 15th meeting a little less topic-heavy than it currently is. Other than that, it's been a lot of COVID meetings, a lot of discussions, so we'll, we'll proceed apace. At the meeting on November 17th, I hope to have further information from our public health team to review with you on a potential for a Phase 1B or other nuances. As you probably noted, Commissioners, in, in some of our communications, the state, depending upon how things go with this pause, the state may decouple the three counties after this pause operation. So, let's all try to be successful with it and get our community members successful with it. Commissioner Scouton, you have a question?
No, I just, just, I just wanted to point out, of course, something I have forgotten to mention, but I'm sure we all share our sense of congratulations and best wishes to Commissioner-elect Nafisa Phi and her election this past, this past week.
Yep. A lot of results, good, positive community results through the election. The election results will be official on, I think it's Monday, November 23rd, so we'll follow up on all of those in the beginning, in our first meetings in December. Alrighty, time for Leadership Communications. Ms. Angie.
I wanted to brief the Board on some COVID data as far as impacts on our workforce. So, looking back at the month of October, we had 27 employees that were impacted by COVID that would have been directly or a direct household member. As we look to the month of November to date, it is at approximately 10, and we do have some inklings that there are some additional ones that employees who have just contacted HR, so I expect that number over the next week to raise. In the future, I will be bringing this information to the Board on a weekly basis so that you can stay up to date on COVID impacts to the workforce in Washington County. And that's all the updates that I have.
Madam Chair, nothing here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rapleyte. Ms. Taniguchi-Dennis for Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, Board of Directors of Clean Water Services. We have some good news that Mark Jockers just reported to me that the Senate Energy and Water Appropriations Bill has included our requested report language for the joint project on, on Scottgagen's Dam. So, that's a very positive movement in Congress, and we're very appreciative of Wyden and Merkley helping us with this bill. We are also preparing for a continuity of businesses relates to our critical infrastructure services. The team is doing very well. We are having more increased internal contact tracing because of people reporting exposure at home or at social gatherings, but the team's doing a really good job following their physical distancing. They're all masking up and, and also their, their hand sanitation and the sanitation within the building. So, that's all good news. We haven't had any additional positive cases at the, at the district, but they are preparing because of what we're seeing with the increases of potential exposures, but other.
Sorry to interrupt, but before you change topics, I wanted to ask this question. Are the crews still successfully deploying so that there's one person in the truck and then other crew members in separate vehicles? Is that going okay?
So, in some cases, they're together in the truck, so they're all masked up when they do that. But the crews have distributed from field operations to different reporting locations, and they're maintaining them safety. With winter coming, we're going to need to move them out of our Springer facility. We're going to move them over to TTM because of the, the weather that's coming and the need for more bathroom facilities, so we're going to be modifying the TTM building to do that. But treatment plants are doing well. Our laboratory is also doing well, so we're able to maintain services. We do have a leaf pickup program this, a program for Saturday, so we're going to be looking at protocols and everything for that, but we, we're planning to continue with the pickup this weekend. But thank you, and thank you to our team. They're doing very well.
Yes, thank you, both of you. Please, please pass on to every employee that we are grateful that they are following these protocols for themselves, for their families, and for their coworkers. Alrighty, we're ready for our first topic, but I know we have an outside speaker.
Madam Chair, we do not have John DePonya on yet.
Chair, he, he was scheduled for 9:15. I expect him to be on at 9 o'clock. I can text him right now.
Okay, alrighty. So, we have a nine-minute gap here. Is there anything we need to go over as a Commission? I don't think we have any short enough items to move around on the agenda. Nope. Well, why don't we take a pause here, and we'll reconvene at 9 o'clock. Okay? Okay, we're back at 9 o'clock. We have all of our commissioners back on Zoom. I see Commissioner Scoughton, Commissioner Treese, Commissioner Willing, Commissioner Rogers. Hello there, Mr. DePonya. Welcome. I'd like to turn it over now to Mark Jockers to introduce our next agenda topic, economic impacts of COVID-19.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. I'm happy to introduce John DePonya with Echo Northwest today. As you recall, John has spoken to the board and to staff a couple of times previously. Clean Water Services joined with Washington County to hire Echo Northwest to look at the impacts of COVID on our economy here in Washington County and more directly on the impacts to Clean Water Services and to the county itself. John spoke to us in May, and he spoke to the Budget Committee, Clean Water Services Budget Committee in June, as well as coming back and talking to the board later in June and kind of seeing where we're going. He's back today to kind of give us what the world looks like six months later. This is part of a three-step process that we are taking the board through right now. It started last week with our CFO, Kathy Leeder's, presentation on budget versus actual versus historical related to revenue with Clean Water Services. Today is about economic indicators. Next week, we're going to be talking to the board about rates and charges. As you recall, we delayed our rate increases in June of this year. We delayed those for the board to make a decision about whether or not to implement in January of 2021 or delay all the way to July of 2021. So with that, I'm going to go over and hand it over to John, who's going to walk us through this presentation. Thank you, John.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And we have come an awful long way in six months, generally speaking. Good news to report on the economic front broadly, and still, obviously, as you're all aware, concerning news on the public health front, at least as where we sit at the moment, with wonderful news coming out yesterday about the possibility of a vaccine on the horizon. So let's see here. Should I just say advance when I want to move slides? I don't know if I have the ability here. Okay, there we go. All right. So, you know, at the very beginning of this pandemic, Bill Connerly, who's an economist down in Lake Otis, we go, said, "If you want me to tell you where the economy is going, tell me where the public health crisis is, or the pandemic is." And so I think that that is the wisest advice I've heard in all of this. So we'll start there. Why don't we go to the next slide? You know, here's the COVID cases. They sort of took that spike in July. We sort of bent that curve back down, but here they are sort of taking off again, and very concerning Oregon and Washington County, sort of moving up to all-time highs as we sit here. You can see, still well below in the notes down here, you can see the national level at 27.7. So Oregon and Washington County, while at all-time highs, are still well below sort of the outbreaks that you're seeing in the Midwest and other parts of this country. Next slide. Again, relatively good news here, although hard to convey anything about deaths as being relatively good news. We're still well below the U.S. totals as we were in the pandemic of 1918 on deaths. So Washington County at 13.6 cumulative deaths per 100,000, compared to 16.8 for the state, well below that 69.8 cumulative deaths at the U.S. level, with, you know, many of those in the Mid-Atlantic states and New York and New Jersey at the pandemic's outset. So again, we're probably still in the bottom half a dozen states in terms of death rates per 100,000. I think I would credit that to some luck that we didn't have a lot of exposure to China and Italy early in this pandemic in terms of travel and business interactions, et cetera, but also, I think, credit to government and public health responses to this as well, and a sort of a collective responsibility in Washington County and in Oregon that is sort of following the public health guidance a little bit more than you're seeing in other parts of the country. Next slide, please. Here's a sense of total time away from home. These are measured on mobility apps, and you can see that big decline in April gradually coming back and sort of leveling off in the June and July period. See the big dip in the beginning of September, both in Oregon and Washington County, and those were the wildfires. Folks stayed home for those eight to 10 days, and we're leveling off there at 13% reduction and moving about relative to the state at 8.5%, and the nation at 9.5%. So Washington County, a little less mobile than other places around the country. Next slide. Here's time spent at restaurant and retail establishments. Again, sort of similar story here. Washington County down almost 20% still relative to January levels. Oregon overall statewide average, a little bit more active in that retail and restaurant space, U.S. at a negative 16.7%. So all sort of in there and sort of the mid-to-high teens. Next slide. And some information sort of coming off this Delphi Research Group in terms of mask wearing. And again, I would sort of go back to those COVID infection and death rates at the beginning, a little bit more sort of public participation in these public health recommendations. In and around 92% to 94% of Washington County residents is sort of scraped off of somehow off of social media, I believe, some Facebook scraping and things of that nature to get these data. Washington County higher than Oregon, Oregon higher than the nation, although you can sort of see that national average starting to creep up as the infection rate picks up across the country. Next slide. So that's your public health front. And I would say, again, you know, if you go back to 1918, you can read articles in Oregonian about, you know, Portland being among the first places to take their windows off their streetcars, that mask-wearing was much more prevalent, social distancing more prevalent. It appears that history is repeating itself, and, you know, both our infection and our death rates in much better shape than the nation as whole, although right now we're in the middle of all-time highs. So what does that mean for the economy? Why don't we go step through these? I'll start at the Oregon level to get this kind of detail to give you a feel for consumer spending. These are taken off of credit and debit card activity. This level of detail is only available at the state level. There you can see that the blue line is total spending came down, you know, a good 30% in April and sort of crawled its way back probably in and around 2.3% down below the January levels. And then you can sort of see the two big pivots. Much sizable decline in restaurant and hotel spending, down 37% still. That's being offset by grocery spending up 24% as of the last reading. If you go into other states, you would sort of get what you would expect. In Florida or Texas or Arizona, you would see more restaurant spending and less grocery spending. Next slide, please. And this just shows the overall consumer spending in Washington County. It doesn't have that breakdown by subsectors, but you can see it sort of moving along, still down 7.4% compared to 2.3% reduction estimated for the state of Oregon. You can see sort of along these lines and probably similar to that time away from home indicator, that a little bit less activity in Washington County than in the state as a whole, but pretty sizable recovery certainly from, you know, go back to that April number, you're down more than a third in consumer spending. So quite a bit of that has recovered by this point. Next slide, please. This is when you, you know, hear about the term K-shaped recovery. This recession is sort of treating the labor market like no other coming before it. Typically, what will happen in a recession is you've got some kind of internal problem in a manufacturing sector, in a high-tech sector, in a housing sector, et cetera, some kind of inventory problem, or a bubble bursts, et cetera, and jobs are lost in that inside those industries. People lose income, et cetera. And then the restaurant and the hotels and sporting events alike suffer because people have less income. This one sort of hit that leisure and hospitality sector head-on, and it is filled with a lot of low and low-middle-income workers in it. So this is sort of the estimate, again, at the state level, of employment changes for high-wage workers, middle-wage workers, and low-wage workers. So, you know, high wage and middle wage, many of those have returned. You can imagine where those have been. There were an awful lot of people that were laid off in the healthcare sector, in non-urgent care, that came back beginning in late May and into June, et cetera. Now, that sector has experienced, you know, by and large, JV-shaped employment recovery. But you also saw it in other aspects of manufacturing, et cetera. What you're seeing here with respect to this low wage is just the persistent ongoing impacts of, in particular, that leisure and hospitality sector, not fully recovering. Next slide shows that same phenomenon there for Washington County. So close to full recovery on jobs for high and middle-wage workers. Big declines for those low-wage workers through September 3. Next slide. Here's where we stand on unemployment, sort of going back to 2010, Washington County against the U.S. This took us up to the September number, and you can see, you know, throughout this process, Washington County's had unemployment rates in the blue that are below the overall U.S. level. They've remained there. We do have one more number available at the national level. Since I published this, they have the October number. It came down to 6.9 last week. Washington County, we still, the September number is the most recent at 6.4. But the interesting thing to show here is Washington County is still sort of overperforming the nation on this unemployment indicator. You know, stronger economy throughout that decade relative to the nation, but then more recently, just less of a concentration of that leisure and hospitality work in Washington County than you're going to see in other parts of the country. Next slide. In terms of where unemployment insurance continuing claims have come from disproportionate impacts as this has proceeded on BIPOC communities and on females. And so what this chart is showing is it's just looking at those unemployment claims in February before the pandemic recession really hit. What was the composition of those unemployment claims in February, and what do those claims composition look like in September? And so what you can see here is back in February, the non-BIPOC, the generally white, non-Hispanic, slightly higher share of claims than they have in September. So that's just meaning that as this has proceeded, sort of those shares have shifted and the composition of them have shifted toward BIPOC claimants, which is consistent with, you know, high shares of Hispanic employees in the leisure and hospitality sector. Same thing going on with gender disproportionately and shifting toward female employees or claimants relative to male as this recession has proceeded. Next slide, please. Just, we've had ongoing interest on housing activity, especially from sort of the perspective of one of the revenue sources, system development charges, et cetera. We had shown these charts, this next series of charts back in May and June, so we just simply updated it a little bit. All that's new is sort of this last observation on the extreme right-hand side. This is year-over-year change in quarterly residential permits for total units in Washington County. So a little bit of uptick in permit activity in that second quarter of 2001. And so simply to say, you know, we haven't, it's not behaving like the last recession where we have this big downturn, but certainly not up to the levels of permit activity that we're seeing, that we saw in 2019. Next slide. Yes?
Can I interrupt you on going back to that one?
You bet.
You didn't quantify by size of permit, did you? I mean, you could have, in one year, you could have huge permits and only a few of them, and the next year, you could have lots of little tiny ones. So you don't know the range of these, or is that coming up?
This is a year-over-year quarterly change. So it would be comparing this quarter to the quarter before, or, you know, the quarter in the preceding year, just trying to get a sense of the trend of the momentum.
Again, you're just looking at sheer numbers of permits. You're not looking at the value of any--
Correct. That's right. That's right. We're just number counting here, so--
So we could be down a little bit or up a little bit, and it wouldn't mean much because the sheer volume of the dollars is what's important.
Right. Yeah. So we'll circle back and see if we can get that dollar number for you.
Thank you.
You bet. Here's how you sort of break that out a little bit, and apologize for those multifamily numbers, which tend to, they have some big surges, and so they go off the chart. And if we were to let them go as high as they wanted to, all the other numbers would get lost in there. So just basically, what this is suggesting is a sort of a gradual decline in permit activity in August of 20. You can see over there on the extreme right-hand side, a little bit of bump up there in multifamily. The single family is down a touch. That linear trend is just trying to follow that total unit line. And so all that is telling us is that that permit activity is slowing relative to the level so we saw in 2019, and that's consistent. Next slide, please. This is actual construction activity of multifamily units. And again, sort of a key point here is sort of going back and looking at that, you know, the Great Recession, where that activity, construction started to decline in 2005, stayed suppressed all the way through 2012. Where that activity construction started to decline in two thousand five, stayed suppressed all the way through two thousand twelve first quarter or so. And then really started to take off. You know, we are not back to that that level of inactivity. In this recession yet, so you know, I I think the the Fed's interest rate policy. And the and the fact that we just didn't have the kind of housing bubble coming into this recession in the same way that we did in the last one. Is playing out and we're seeing. Seeing the housing market not nearly as adversely affected as it was in the last recession. Next slide. I think next section. So what's the outlook? Let me take a step through. Now. This may be one of the better pieces of news in the entire deck. This comes out of the state's September forecast. The change between the expectations in their June forecast and their September forecast were as big as any, you know, as I have ever seen. So what this is doing is looking at employment recoveries over the last several recessions. Just for reference, that sort of dark charcoal line is the very slow job recovery coming out of the two thousand seven recession. So essentially what that's showing you is that, you know, unemployment came or employment fell by about eight and a half, nine percent. Two years after two thousand seven, and it took until two thousand fourteen, seven years later. For it to fully recover and get back to the levels of employment in two thousand seven. So then you come to these couple of red charts, and I'll start with or red lines. I'll start with the light dotted red, which is where the state economists thought the economy was going when they were asked in June. They thought it was going to be a twenty percent reduction in employment. That would, you know, rebound and then slowly sort of come back over the course of four years. Just three months later, in the very next forecast. They come back and say, no, it looks like they were going to bottom out sort of a fourteen percent reduction. And then it's going to grad, you know, it'll bounce back a little bit more, and then it's going to gradually come back and we'll probably be back. In shape by early twenty twenty three. In terms of employment levels. That is i- is a big shift in expectations. And had major ramifications on their budget forecasts that I'll 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 describe as we proceed through here. Next slide, please. I'm going to revisit this a little bit. The 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 CARES Act and, you know, you're certainly all familiar with the twelve hundred dollars. And certainly with the the resources that Washington County received directly through the CARES Act, et cetera. But I want to talk about these. Expanded enhanced unemployment claims for a moment because they are still having an effect on the economy. Even though they stopped at the end of July. So as you will remember, in Oregon, this is how these. Expanded benefits played out. If you were making sixty two thousand five hundred coming into your spell of unemployment. You are eligible for something in the neighborhood of six hundred and forty eight dollars a week, about half. That's the golden rod, a- a- about half of your weekly income from your job. Under Oregon's traditional unemployment comp, that's sort of the design of it. You get about fifty percent replacement. But then, and most would credit Senator Ron Wyden for this, the federal government through the CARES Act added six hundred dollars to that. So for the sixty two thousand five hundred dollar employee, they got basically a hundred percent replacement. Through the end of July. That six hundred dollars was held constant regardless of what your income was. So somebody, if you sort of moved down to the twenty two thousand five hundred dollar employee. They were getting two hundred and eighty one dollars a month or sixty five percent replacement. From state unemployment insurance, but then they got the same six hundred dollars per week. You add those together and they all of a sudden were getting two times for a period of time, two times what they were taking home in earnings before they were laid off. So what happened? Let's take a look at the next slide, and this isn't only associated with. With the unemployment insurance, but it it certainly played into it. Here's the personal savings rate in the United States going back to the sixties. So it, you know, it hovered around between ten and fifteen percent until we got into the. Sort of eighties and nineties and it drifted down to the single digits and then sort of was coming back up a little bit after the Great Recession. And then for a period of time shot up to thirty, you know, over thirty percent. So you had a couple of things going on here. If you push two point three trillion dollars of federal money into the economy. During a period when consumers actually have more limited options on spending than they traditionally do. Right, there's whole their vacations and. And and travel and restaurant meals out, et cetera, that are off limits to them. The savings rate goes up. Take a look at the next slide, and this will give you a feel. This is out of Chase Bank. They looked at checking accounts associated with people who had been unemployed because they knew they could see that they're receiving UI benefits. Or who remained employed over the the entire period of time. And they're indexing and trying to sort of keep an eye on how their savings or or their, this is just their checking account end of month balance. Changed over time. So if you go back, these are indices. So if you go back to January. Those who received those extra. Federal payments that were unemployed, you could see their savings or their checking accounts balances. Growing over that period of time until you hit that July period. When the when when those payments ended, and then all of a sudden you're starting to draw on those payments going forward. You don't see a similar uptick in checking account balances. For people who remain steadily employed over that entire period, although they did go, I mean, they're up, you know, twenty percent. It's still a solid increase, just not sort of two hundred and twenty percent you're seeing for the unemployed workers. Next, next slide. So then we get into this notion of. When our, you know, as those savings gradually get drawn down, if Congress doesn't come back in. What do we pay attention to and what are we listening to? You know, for those workers who continue to be struggling and unemployed at these elevated rates of unemployment. This is a US Census Pulse Survey. That has been taken over a number of weeks. I believe this sixteenth week survey was taken in October. And what they're asking the adults in the survey is, did you. Somewhat or very difficult circumstances in trying to pay for your usual household expenses during the pandemic. And, you know, what we're seeing is it's sort of, it's still kind of steady. The Oregon respondents a little bit lower than the US level, but the trend not going up. And so I guess if if. If you had a hypothesis that you might anticipate that as those savings get drawn down and we get further away from that. Sort of end of the CARES Act stimulus activity. That that we would expect these these to start to trend up, but they haven't quite yet. Next slide, please. Then this other piece to sort of bookend that economic forecast. That I showed you at the beginning, this is all from also from the state economist out of their September. They were looking at March through September. Income tax receipts going back to two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. Broke a record, so they were. I think they were surprised as anybody. When they came out with their September numbers, both the 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 recession didn't go as deep as they were anticipating. But I don't think they had anticipated just how many different ways that that two point three trillion dollar federal stimulus was going to find its way into. Income receipts, so they not only get them through UI benefits or taxable. But then on the corporate side, you know, s- some of the activity that you saw on the corporate side. Was also filling the corporate income tax, which actually isn't shown in this chart, but the state. Sort of to tell the story on the state budget. If you went back to June, they were anticipating. Sort of a deficit of four billion dollars for the upcoming biennium, the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three biennium. When they came back in September, they had cut that anticipated deficit in half. So a challenge, needless to say, but not the kind of challenge that they were describing in June. All right, next, next slide. We'll just now sort of think about as as you think about ratepayers. Let's go and revisit a couple of slides that we spoke about in June. Factors to consider this recession, the the these are, this is literally a slide from June. This recession is likely going to be deeper but shorter than the Great Recession. Did ask rest deeper, it did temporarily obviously go deeper. But it was a pretty, pretty abrupt, quick episode there, and it is working its way back, certainly not the depths that we were anticipating. When I spoke to you last. Virus and federal fiscal policy will be key determinants of the recession's depth and length. I think you still hear that, obviously. The news that came out yesterday with the with the with the potential Pfizer. Vaccine, I think, and other ones that might be coming in are making a little bit more concrete, hopefully. A notion of how long this could go. I think economists are still looking at end of the second quarter of two thousand twenty one. For that vaccine to have been deployed enough that it's really going to have an effect on economic activity. And so then the question is with. With a new administration coming in. Is there is there a different dynamic in Congress to make some kind of extension? Or a new package of stimulus, which I think a large majority of economists would agree continues to be needed. In a much more targeted fashion on this legion hospitality sector and its workers. Number three, the impacts fall disproportionately on the leisure and hospitality sector and its workforce. That is still true, and extended spells of unemployment will be concentrated among younger workers. And those without college degrees enhance that K shaped recovery that you're seeing play out. So most of this from June has has held true. Next slide, please. So widely differential impacts on small businesses and low wage workers versus publicly traded companies and shareholders. So again, you know, the point that we've made repeatedly, Wall Street isn't Main Street. Stock market is not the real economy. They are telling us two very different stories, still elevated rates of 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 unemployment and threats of business closures. But stocks now sort of moving into higher and high, higher and higher highs. Really driven by sort of those core tech stocks that are faring well during this. During this pandemic. Now, this, when I refer to a program, we were sort of talking about the possibility of some ratepayer relief. And in saying in terms of design. You could, if you were going to have a program, and I know you 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 did endow a program with some CARES fund money that is running through community action. You'd sort of sit back and try to think about when, how long would that program go? Try to figure out. You know, run it through the end of the pandemic or some number of months after the development dissemination of the vaccine. Or if the county's unemployment rate falls below some specified level, that you might want to keep a program like that in place. And my recommendation now, sort of sitting and thinking about it, is that we will, we will have a good sense of when this pandemic. Has ended. When the employment in the leisure and hospitality sector. Has returned to something close to its to its February. Two thousand twenty level, and so let's take a look at that next chart. This would be one important indicator on the next chart that I would pay attention to if it's available. There we go. So again, this is not all employment. This is, this is, and this is Portland Metro. I couldn't get it from Washington County. But this is employment in the leisure hospitality sector indexed to February of two thousand twenty. You can see it hits that hundred percent mark right there in February. We're still below seventy percent of of employment of that sector. So I would say, you know, until you get up into the in in into the nineties or closer to a hundred. That that sector and those very hard hit businesses and 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 many low and low middle income workers. Haven't had a chance to fully recover yet, so that would be the chart I'd pay attention to. With that, I'll 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 leave it there and happy to field any questions you have.
Commissioners, I can't see you all. So I'm. Going to work through the the roster on questions. Commissioner Rogers, do you have any questions?
John, there is some inconsistencies in in a couple of slides. And what I'm saying by that is you're placing a lot of emphasis on hospitality businesses and. Leisure businesses. Saying the recovery, watch that for the recovery. What we saw, and I'm not saying as commissioners, but outside in the business world. During those periods of time with when there was a backfill with federal funds. And you pointed out on one of your charts, there was no reason for anybody to go back to work because they were making. Sometimes two to two and a half times or more what they were what they were making working. Now, we can argue all day about, you know, what should be amount of work and what's reasonable and all that sort of thing. If there is another federal stimulus. Why would anyone go back if they're making two and three times more taking federal stimulus money?
Right.
Than accepting a job, which then in your last side, you said, well, watch that because.
That's right.
But it seems to be a problem in understanding how those two align.
Yeah, no, fair point, and, you know, economists have debated this quite a bit. Clearly, those incentives are what they are, and and there are, you know, direct stories and. Testimony from individual business owners from across the country. That is that they would talk to employees and that incentive was doing what it was doing. If you ask, if there was sort of the poll, the top forty economists, the University of Chicago does this back in the back in the summer, and they said, you think that. That's the major constraint unemployment, or is it sort of businesses inability and sort of a lack of demand? They would say, we understand the incentive, we would say that. The bulk of the problem is on just the overall sort of weakness of the economy as opposed to that particular incentive. So that's that that's one perspective. The the, I think the other point to to the point that you're making here is. If another package came forward. I think economists would say. Six hundred dollars probably isn't the right number. But neither is zero. And so finding something that is. That that strikes a better balance between those. Is 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 the is the way to go. So whether it be a, you know, a three or four hundred dollar. Addition or something that sort of pegs it to a replacement rate so that there's still an incentive for people to go back to work.
Related to that, Mr. Tapanja, is there evidence here either in Oregon or in Washington County? That employers want to be operating. But they're not able to because they have workers that are choosing to stay unemployed versus. Return to the workforce.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't think anyone has definitively. Study that, certainly a lot of anecdotes out there, and I would say that that activity was. If it was the case, it was much more the case in June and July. When when those supplements were still available than than it would be today because they aren't available anymore. The money's in those savings accounts or spent.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Willie has his hand.
Commissioner Rogers, did you have more questions?
I just had one more, but I will respond, John, quickly to what the chair was asking. We had a job in about the time period you're talking about. It was a. I don't want to say lower level because you never want to say lower level, but it was in the forty thousand range. Or front desk, and we heard repetitively, we're making more on unemployment. Until unemployment stops, we're not going to accept a job. We told the state that, we were working with some state folks, but my second question real quickly. real quickly, and you probably can't answer this, but I've now heard from multiple businesses that they're looking at exiting the metropolitan area because of a series of taxes, and because particularly of the cat tax, and now looking at out of state, especially for those who are in the information businesses, intellectual businesses, because they don't need to be here, they could be anywhere, they could be in Vancouver, Washington. Whether that's really serious, I mean, they're talking about it, they're looking at sites, have you picked up on any of that, have you heard much about that, or is that just boiling around?
Well, in terms of, you know, in terms of current activity, I haven't been sort of monitoring that in terms of real time. I will just say, you do, that businesses tend to respond to taxes more on a regional level than they do on a, on a sort of broad state-to-state level, or, you know, cities to cities. So it's less that a, less that a business is sitting down and saying, oh, I'm going to shop between Denver and the Portland metro area, than they're going to say, I've decided to be in the Portland metropolitan area, and now I'm going to shop within it. And the fact that we're sitting on a border with a state with a very different tax code makes our sort of relative tax differences more important. I mean, we do have the biggest difference in methods of taxation between our two, at this border, within the Portland metropolitan area, than any other place in the United States. You know, Louisville, Kentucky's got issues, Cincinnati, Ohio, et cetera, but we have two radically different tax regimes, and you have the ability, if you're a businessperson, to say, oh, well, you know, I do, to some extent, have the same access to natural amenities, natural resources, to some degree, labor within this region, now I'm going to kind of shop around on taxes. So it is something to pay attention to.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, John, and just, Roy, to respond to yours, I, you know, as you know, I sit on the Board of Greater Portland Inc., which is our regional economic group, and they can give you some statistics that says not only are we missing opportunities with business coming to Oregon that we're very, very interested prior to all of the unrest in Portland, they are no longer interested in coming here, and then we also have a fairly good segment of the Portland-centered businesses that are moving to the suburbs, and then we have a pretty good, I think, snapshot of businesses that are also taking advantage, as John said, of just moving across the border or going elsewhere. And I think we're going to see our, our upper echelon of wealthy individuals doing exactly the same thing, because they certainly can take their money and go anywhere, certainly across the river, and it's pretty easy, they still get to shop in Oregon for no sales tax, and they get all the perks, and they just don't have to pay all the extreme taxes that the state of Oregon is going to assess, has assessed, and going to. So that's just my spiel on that. My question to you, John, was, you showed a graph in there of unemployments between minority organizations and white, and then you showed male and female, and I thought I read in the Oregonian last weekend that there was like 450,000 women across the United States that has decided not to go back to work primarily because of daycare, but, but yeah, they, they have to stay home to take care of their children and educate their children now, and so they cannot return to the workforce. Your graph here doesn't really support that, I guess, unless I'm reading this wrong. So could you respond to that?
Yeah, well, so, related but different, but different issue, what you're describing would be stepping out of the labor force altogether, in which case they wouldn't show up on these unemployment insurance claims, but your point is a very important one, labor force participation among women nationally has dropped off more than labor force participation for men nationally. If you sort of, and if you isolated on men and women with children, you get the same, the same story to sort of isolate that. So your point is there are sizable numbers of women and some men stepping out of the labor force completely, in which case they don't show up on unemployment insurance claims. What this story is saying is that the composition of those who have been laid off and are receiving unemployment has become somewhat more concentrated among women and people of color, and that is consistent with the composition of the leisure and hospitality workforce.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trish?
Thank you. Good morning, John, thank you for being here, it's great to see you, and always appreciate your information. You talked about the large correction that the, from the Oregon State Economist on the revenue projections between June and September. We're expecting the next report next week, and I'd like to know what your thoughts are about, if that, if that correction will be changed a lot, and I realize this is a crystal ball question, but I would like to hear what your thoughts are about the next projections.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that would boil down, I don't see anything in the big macroeconomic numbers, I mean, you saw a continued decline in U.S. unemployment numbers in this last, last week's release. So there's no big story that I see that would suggest, the economy seems to be moving dramatically in some other direction. Some of it would have to do with what they, what their expectations were in September with respect to continued federal support. So if, if, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how they adjust for that, or et cetera, but if they were anticipating some kind of continued federal support to come into play, they then have to sort of step back and calibrate their expectations based on the election outcome.
Commissioner Scouton, do you have any questions?
Actually, I really don't at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you, John, for an excellent presentation. I think the broad outlines is something I could, I, what any big surprises. See, what I'm curious about, I suppose, is what happens in the coming year, and what impact it's going to have on the, on the county's budget.
So I'll, I'll go over my question. When you were sharing with us, or reminding us of the perspective from June, and then the implication to ratepayers, I was recalling how through the, the checkpointing of the coronavirus relief funds, that for the utility assistance program, our team noted two things. One is that for some residents, particularly in multifamily situations, their utilities were included in their rent, so they couldn't take advantage of the program. But then in other cases, there were folks who were unemployed, but were still trying to keep up with their utility payments, for whatever reason, right, other than knowing that utility workers are out there 24/7 continuing to offer service. The other observation that, or the point I wanted to come to, is we as Washington County provide services to some of the most needy individuals, residents here in our community. And as the Supreme Court is now hearing challenges to Obamacare, I'm thinking about folks who are unemployed, who are currently covered by health insurance coverage, who, depending upon how the Supreme Court rules, may soon not have healthcare insurance. And it takes me back to the time before Obamacare, and one of the reasons why the Affordable Care Act was put in place is because we, as employers and as employed people, we were paying ever-increasing higher and higher and higher healthcare premiums in order to cover the uninsured who were not getting more routine medical care, and were needing to go, when they needed healthcare, going for the most expensive solution because of the criticality and the delay in care. So, as we look forward, it seems to me like we are continuing to be in an uncertain time period. We can remain hopeful that things will slowly climb back up for recovery, but we do still, it seems to me, but this is where I'm looking for confirmation, because I'm not an economist, but it seems from my viewpoint that, or from where I sit, that there are some macroeconomic forces, and by macro, I mean outside of Washington County, right, outside of the state of Oregon, that we're just going to have to ride through and see what happens, and, and try and make the most of the uncertainty that remains ahead of us. What, what do you think about that? How, or how instead should I be positioning my thought process?
No, I, you know, and, and, and I say, with respect to uncertain, I would say, my presentations have never had a shorter shelf life than they have had this year. They, so, you know, keep an eye as, on, you know, progress with the vaccine, et cetera. I think the one thing that really just stands out here, I mean, we had inequities coming into this, punishing inequities coming into this recession. This recession is, has just put all of those in such tremendous high relief. It does appear that, you know, major parts of the economy have figured out how to do their work with the virus in the background. You know, much of the professional services sector, the insurance sector, the, you name it, the construction sector, has figured out a way to go back to work and socially distance and go about their, go about their jobs. That just has not been the case for the vast majority of the leisure and hospitality sector, and it's going to get worse as we go into winter, and sort of those outdoor dining options and things of that nature become harder and harder. So, it's, it's hard, you know, as you're sort of thinking about providing public service or assessing fees or taxes, et cetera, you've got, you've got some of your community who are roughly in the same position that they were in January and February in their ability to pay. And then you've got this, a, you know, a concentrated group of individuals who are really suffering, and are going to continue to suffer well into the second quarter of next year, but even when that vaccine is fully, and the pandemic is controlled, it's still going to take, you know, another year and a half after that for that, for that sector to sort of find its way back to February 2000 level. So I think compassion and understanding that we're going to have elevated unemployment rates into 2022, and hopefully a recovery by 2023.
Thank you. And I would like to take the atypical step, since you're doing this work on behalf of Clean Water Services and Washington County, to ask our two leaders, Ms. Tanya Angie, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Diane Taniguchi-Dennis, the CEO of Clean Water Services, to see if you have any questions about this presentation, or some perspectives that you want to make sure is solidified in Commissioner's thoughts.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, and John, thank you for your presentation, and it's nice to meet you. I just want to lift up the equity issues, and I would ask that we keep that in the forefront as we move into the budget process this next year, because we do know that there, portions of our community are affected very differently. And so I just, we will continue to lift that up as a reminder, and Latricia Tillman is leading that within the county currently. So I just want to say that in reflection from my standpoint. And then also, we do need to ensure we keep our, our attention on this, because I'm convinced that this forecast will change in the next few months and continue to evolve. And so staying current with what Washington County is facing, but then also the country as a whole, is really important for us to be in tune with. So thank you.
Thank you, John. As always, we really appreciate the information that you provided as we think about for Clean Water Services, what our forward rate policy and SDC policy would be. I think what your presentation really hit home with me is for those low-income wage earners, particularly those impacted by food service and hospitality, when our CARES funding ends as it relates to ratepayer assistance, that's certainly a component that we need to be mindful of moving forward, that in general, the general economy could probably handle a rate increase both for underlying sewer and stormwater rates and SDCs, but it's really something with that lowest quartile that we really need to be thoughtful of moving forward. But I really appreciate the data, and that it's a little more positive than we originally anticipated back in June. So thank you.
Which in closing reminds me that yesterday, in the meeting that the governor had with county commissioners and mayors throughout the four additional counties that were added to the PAWS list, she was suggesting that we each reach out to our members of Congress with two very clear asks. One is to restore that PUA for those who will continue to be unemployed, and to ask very firmly to get the message across that we need an assistance package that goes directly to governments. And that, and what she means by that is that it's a package for local governments, specifically counties and cities, directly and not through the state. So the state is not looking to be the broker of funds, as they found themselves in distributing the coronavirus relief funds to the 34 of the 36 counties, with the exception of Washington County and Multnomah County and the city of Portland. So we'll need to get working on that and share that with our congressional representatives to help ensure that they have effective messages as they work with their colleagues moving forward. So one last round of questions, Commissioners, do you have any last questions? Thank you, Mr. Topanya, for continuing to expand our knowledge base as we endeavor to do a good work for all members of, of Washington County, whether you're a resident or a business who is based here. Thank you very much, too, for staying healthy and ensuring that your workforce stays healthy.
I just have one quick comment to make. I really appreciated the nice summary that Diane Taniguchi just gave. I think that was a good overview of the, of the general broad points, and I appreciate the Chair bringing up the issues of both local government funding and the importance of us having a direct access and allocations to that. I mean, there really is a different skill set and a different perspective that comes at the, at the state level, the legislative level there, that doesn't really relate as well, and this is going to be the same depth of understanding as to what our needs are, particularly in a metropolitan area like ours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Topanya.
All right, thank you, good luck today.
So we now have a 15-minute break before we come back to our three remaining items that will take us to close to the noon hour. So we'll see everyone back here at 10:15. Thank you. Thank you.
Scouten shouldn't shut off his camera, but he was there and Commissioner Threes. There's Commissioner Willie and.
Teresa should be on as well. And I believe Andy Back is on too.
Yeah, Teresa's on.
Okay, well, welcome back from break, everyone. We're going to proceed with our next work session topic, short-term rental regulations discussion. And our Director of Land Use and Transportation Planning, Stephen Roberts, will kick things off for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're here to follow up on a topic that we brought before you, just before the stay-home, save-lives order back in March. Our short-term rentals, and so we received some direction from the Board at that time, generally that your request was to move forward with developing some regulations and requirements implemented through a licensing-type process. And so I'm going to ask Suzanne Savin to walk us through a presentation, and we have both some updates and some questions where we'd like to try to get some feedback from the Board today as well. And then this is all leading up to some public engagement that we'll be doing here in the next couple of months. And so I'll just let Suzanne walk us through all that. Thank you.
Welcome Suzanne and Teresa.
Hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. So as Mr. Roberts noted, we're going to be providing a brief recap of the staff recommendations and Board direction we got on March 10th, and provide an overview of some draft short-term rental requirements and outline next steps in developing those requirements further. And we're hoping to get preliminary Board feedback on some of the requirements, draft requirements we discussed today before we bring them to the public in a virtual open house. So next slide, please. So a short-term rental is defined as a dwelling unit or portion of it that's rented or leased for less than 30 days. And through initial research, staff's aware that the county has a number of short-term rentals. The majority of these are in the urban unincorporated area, but there are some in the rural area as well. And host compliance, a private short-term rental monitoring company, provided us with a snapshot in February 2020 showing that there were a total of about 560 short-term rentals in the county on that date. Next slide, please. So we've received comments from the public over the last five years, and most of those comments have been expressing concerns about neighborhood impacts of short-term rentals, including impacts regarding noise, parking, traffic, and trash. And several of the comments requested that the county develop short-term rental regulations. Next slide. So on the 2019-2020 work program for long-range planning, an issue paper was a Tier One task. And that issue paper was prepared and issued on February 26 of this year. And it outlined positive and negative community impacts of short-term rentals, regulations and approval processes for short-term rentals used by other jurisdictions, and some enforcement considerations for these. The paper concluded by summarizing staff recommended options to address resident concerns and preliminary recommendations for further action. Next slide, please. So the issue paper recommended regulation of short-term rentals through a registration or license approval process. And the Board concurred with that recommendation that the March 10 work session directed staff to develop short-term rental requirements and approval process through license or registration with the requirements addressing the policy objectives of minimizing likelihood of community impacts, such as party houses, noise, parking, and trash, and increasing short-term rental operator accountability and providing a path to close down problem short-term rentals. Next slide. So one thing that we think is important to keep in mind is that the short-term rental license fee should fully cover staff time for administration and enforcement of the short-term rental license program and should also cover a third-party short-term rental compliance company contract for identifying the address and owners of the short-term rentals in the unincorporated county. Next slide. So for the next two slides, I'm going to talk about some preliminary staff recommendations for draft short-term rental licensing requirements. And these were based on a review of other nearby jurisdictions' requirements and sort of best practices as county staff sought for some of these things. So for maximum occupancy, we're recommending two occupants per sleeping area plus two additional occupants. For group events, we're recommending that these be permitted if the total number of individuals at the group event do not exceed the maximum approved occupancy limits of the short-term rental. For noise, we're recommending the quiet hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. enforced as per the county's noise control standards, and that the short-term rental operator would post a notice about these quiet hours and about the county's noise control standards in the short-term rental unit to alert the occupants to these. For trash, the short-term rental operator we're recommending would provide covered garbage in recycling containers and would make sure that garbage is removed from the property at least once per week. Next slide. So primary residency is a concept that staff is not proposing. But what it is, is it is a requirement for the short-term rental operator to demonstrate that the dwelling that they're renting is their primary residence according to tax records or their DMV records. Again, we're not proposing to require that. But we, staff is recommending that the short-term rental operator be required to provide their contact information to all of the surrounding property owners within a 300-foot radius of the short-term rental property and to provide an affidavit of mailing to the county that they've done so. License revocation could be done by the Land Use and Transportation Director or Designee if the short-term rental does not comply with requirements. And I'm going to pause here for a moment. There's two slides coming up where we're going to talk a little bit about two other potential requirements that warrant a little more discussion. But I'm going to pause for a moment to see if any of the Board members had comments about the ones I've outlined so far or thoughts about whether there are other requirements that should be included that I haven't mentioned.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, I thought we had, when we had this discussion before, one of the other issues was parking. And so I was, I was thinking in my mind, a four-bedroom house would allow for 10 occupants, which actually could feasibly mean 10 vehicles.
Yes, we're going to go over that in a moment.
That's in the next, that's next.
It is. You have sort of, you have ESP there, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, any questions up to this point? Okay, thank you Suzanne.
All right, so next slide is about parking. Because that's when we reviewed other jurisdictions' requirements, there was a lot of variability about what other jurisdictions were requiring. So there wasn't sort of like one best practice seemingly. So some options would be not requiring any onsite parking at all for a short-term rental. There are a couple of jurisdictions that don't require any parking at all. Requiring one onsite parking space for the short-term rental. Or requiring a number, the number of spaces would be based on an approved number of occupants. For example, one space per every four occupants. So we'd like to get Board members' thoughts about these three options and which ones maybe seem like they might make the most sense, or if you had any thoughts about them, we'd appreciate that.
I have a, I have a question for Suzanne. Suzanne, do you have any concept of how many of these sites are close to public transit and can, are dependent upon public transit for their occupancy?
We don't have that level of information about them. When host compliance gave us the snapshot in February 2020, it was, you know, they gave us a county-wide map with sort of dots, and so they didn't give us actual addresses. So it's difficult to know whether or how many of the units might be close to public transit. It's, it's a good question, but we just don't have that information.
Okay. Do you, is there any correlation between the areas that have no requirements for public transit and their density issues? Which would tie us to public.
I, I think there is. I mean, for example, City of Portland is one of the jurisdictions that does not require any onsite parking for short-term rentals. And that the city's policy seems to be, you know, trying to, you know, kind of have their policy push people or encourage people to use public transit. So I think there is a correlation.
Well, and as we well know from various presentations, Portland has a much more dense network of transit solutions than we have throughout Washington County, but including the urban unincorporated areas. So if you're asking for feedback right now on parking, my thinking is that a number based on approved number of occupants is a good way to proceed. Because if we think about how Washington County has marvelous view sheds. You know, people who are coming here, particularly in these, these areas that I'm seeing that are up in the hills, those don't have much in the way of transit service and may have multiple occupants traveling here from elsewhere. So one seems too little, possibly. And I don't like fixing it at just one, one based upon occupancy. I think option C is much more flexible for the situation that we find ourselves in.
I would support that. I also believe that parking was one of the key issues that we heard from our constituents about in asking for this type of licensing or permitting process.
Commissioner Willie, you had some questions on parking earlier. Oh, and then I'll go to Commissioner Scouten next.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think for me, before I answer the A, B, C on the parking spaces, could you kind of give me a little bit more clear definition of the type of short-term rentals that we are talking about? And my question specifically is, are these primarily single-family houses that, that are allowing these short-term rentals, which is the problem area in the neighborhoods because they're throwing these big parties? Is that primarily what we're trying to solve here?
Well, it seems as if it may be. And I'm saying that because when host compliance provided that data back in February about number of short-term rentals, they also did kind of a high-level analysis of what dwelling types were being used as short-term rentals on that date. And they found that about 80% of the short-term rentals in the unincorporated county in February 2020 were entire homes, you know, entire single-family homes. And a lesser number, I think in the neighborhood of 12%, were, were multifamily or, you know, not single-family homes. And then there was a small percentage where they couldn't determine what, what type of home it was. It was sort of other. So, so, yeah, there's a lot of, based on that data, it seems like many of these are single-family dwellings.
Okay, thank you for that, because that, that helps me, I think, understand. I mean, I own a condo that I could, if I wanted to, enter into the short-term market. But also, the parking around that is monitored very, very strongly by a tow company. And, yeah, there's, there's no slack in there. You leave your car in the wrong spot for too long, and it'll be gone when you come back. So we wouldn't have a problem with that on these, coming up with parking on these. So based on what you said, I'm, I'm in agreement with the Chair. Item C there seems to be the easiest one to, to implement, I think, in this situation.
Commissioner Scouten?
I, I just have a couple of questions about if, if it might be helpful to have a more detailed breakout what jurisdictions are opting for A, B, and C, and maybe more specifically, within those jurisdictions, what the nature of the neighborhoods in terms of zoning, what the parking situation, on-street parking, off-street parking situation is, a little bit of detail to, to see jurisdictions and neighborhoods that are analogous to the ones that we would be providing regulations or not for.
Suzanne, is that in the existing issue paper?
I'm not sure if that's in the issue paper. It is information that I can, I can provide to the Board, sort of following this meeting, because I have looked at that. What I remember sort of off the top of my head for when I was reviewing this is I had the issue paper had focused on the regulations of nine other jurisdictions kind of near, near us. They were Lake Oswego, City of Milwaukee, Portland, Clackamas County, Clatsop County, Tillamook County, Hood River County, Bend, and City of Hood River. And so what I recall sort of off the cuff is that the jurisdictions that didn't, did not require any parking spaces were Portland, Lake Oswego, and City of Milwaukee. Most of the other jurisdictions did require some amount of onsite parking, varied from one to the other in terms of what they required, you know, how many spaces per occupant or per. But, but that is, I can provide you with a little more details to follow on that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I, the only question I have, and I appreciate, Harry, you bringing up the issue on parking, because it was, but I like C, but I don't know what parking is defined as. And let me tell you what I mean by that. I, I decided, because I'm out of town, to bring my RV and my boat, which is attached, and park it. I'm out of town, so I moved my party from my house to the RV. There's vehicles that might be parked other than we anticipate. We need to address that. I mean, we need to say, based on the number of occupants, but by the type of vehicle. You know, I'm out of town, and I have a big wheel truck that I park out in front of the neighborhood and take up three, you know, two blocks. Does that make sense, Suzanne? I mean, we, we're really not defining it. We're thinking of somebody driving in in their small vehicle and parking, but there could be a lot of other things.
Right. So if I understand, Commissioner Rogers, you're noting that some people coming to a short-term rental might be bringing an RV with them, or they might be bringing a boat or some, something more sizable than a car?
Yes, and they, that's right. And so if you had no parking, where would you park that stuff? And if you only had it based upon occupants, there's only four of us, but we have three more out in the RV, you know, that are coming in and using the facilities and the kitchen and all that sort of thing. The neighborhood are really concerned about what it does. It changes the character of the neighborhoods.
That's a good point.
I don't see any other raised hands on this. I would just like to make one, one more comment. Another reason why I gravitated towards item C is in developing, choosing a policy that would base approval on parking spaces based on the approved number of occupants is, while the issue paper provided data, and Suzanne has noted it here, data that we have from February of 2020. As we move forward in developing and adopting policies and enforcement code for this, we need to make sure that it's good policy, not only for the situation as we know it today, but moving ahead. And the League of Oregon Cities has provided information, and I've been learning from other cities in the state, and in other states, particularly as I have taken advantage of short-term rentals, both in multiple jurisdictions here in Oregon, but also in adjoining states, specifically out in Bozeman, Montana. So I want to make sure that we do a good job on this to better serve our communities. But we'll need to make sure that we also have good collaboration with our adjoining cities on this as well as we move forward. Thank you Suzanne. I think we can move forward to your next one.
Right. So the next one is regarding which structures can be used to short-term rentals. There was some variability between jurisdictions here as well. Staff is recommending that short-term rentals be limited to legally established permanent dwelling units. These would be both detached and attached, single-family dwelling units, as well as multifamily dwelling units. What is a little more of a question is that for lots that contain two or more single-family units, and so I'm going to give an example of a lot that contains both a house and up to two accessory dwelling units, because we allow that now. There's a question about which of those dwellings, or whether all of those dwellings should be allowed to be rented as short-term rentals on that lot. So, you know, one option would be to limit short-term rental to one dwelling unit per single-family lot. And another option would be to allow any or all of the single, of the dwellings on that lot to be used as short-term rentals. So I wanted to sort of take the Board's temperature on those two possibilities.
While Commissioners are pondering that, I will contribute that I've actually seen this in place. I've gone on the Portland tour of auxiliary dwelling units over multiple years, at least two different years. And I remember one of those cases being essentially a cottage kind of house, a smaller house in Portland, where the basement was converted to an auxiliary dwelling unit, which had been rented. You know, the, the homeowner, the property owner, described it being used primarily by corporate travelers. But they also had a camper, a, in this case, it was one of those cricket kind, that they occasionally rented as a separate dwelling unit as well, when they thought the weather was good. And that was for a different type of, of, a different segment than for the other auxiliary dwelling unit. dwelling unit. And I can see where, throughout Washington County, in our different geographies, not so much maybe for me, the urban unincorporated area, but out in the rural areas, how there could be a variety of auxiliary dwelling units provided in different seasons of the year or not, but it's really based upon, upon properties. So, I just wanted to offer that up as some very real-world examples of how we might see Commissioners, any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Commissioner Therese.
So, I'm a little confused. I believe, Suzanne, you said that the staff recommendation was to limit short-term rentals to legal permanent dwellings. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we, we're, I kind of want to qualify that a little bit. Within the urban unincorporated area, that's definitely staff's recommendation, is that these be limited to dwell, permanent dwellings, and, and that things like campers not be allowed to be short-term rentals. The rural area is a separate, sort of a separate issue with its own sort of considerations, and I have a slide about that a little later in the presentation, and we might want to spend some time on that. But, but, yes, staff's thought is definitely for the urban unincorporated area that these be dwellings only, that campers and tents and, you know, tiny homes that are not dwellings that are on, on wheels, that those not be allowed to be short-term rentals. But it still leaves the scenario where you've got a legal permanent house, and then two legal permanent accessory dwelling units on a lot. That's a possibility that can happen in the urban unincorporated area, and so it's sort of like, you know, how do we treat that? Do we allow all three of those dwellings on that lot to be short-term rentals, or do we say that only one of the three can, or two of the three? So, that's, that's what this slide is sort of, that's the scenario this slide is kind of looking at.
So, my, so my question, and I too have, I haven't experienced it, but I have seen locations where there's, you know, old airstream trailers that have been updated, and they're, you know, really cool places to stay, really hip type of things to do. And I don't understand what the downside is for unincorporated, or unincorporated urban Washington County to, to allow for that. Can you help me understand what, what we're anticipating would be the problems if we were to do that, to limit in unincorporated?
I think one of the issues is our community development code does not allow anything that's not a dwelling to be used as a dwelling currently. So, you know, so it doesn't allow, in the rural or urban area, does not allow like an RV to be used as a dwelling at all, except in the situation where someone is using that as a temporary health hardship dwelling. They can use an RV as a dwelling for a temporary health hardship dwelling in the, in the rural area. They don't have that option to use an RV as a dwelling at all in the urban area. So, it sort of, if we were to allow a short-term rental, like a RV or airstream in the urban unincorporated area, in the residential zones, to be used as a, as a short-term rental, it then opens up our code about, well, can RVs be used as a long-term dwelling in the urban area? And how do we, how do we tell, you know, what's happening? So, there's, there's, it's sort of like trying to figure out a very firm line in the sand about what is and what isn't a dwelling, what, what can someone live in, you know? So, that's what I would just say off the cuff, is it opens up a lot of, a lot of other things.
Thank you.
Related to that, before we move on to Commissioner Scowton, Suzanne, could you remind us then, what, what defines permanent?
Um, well, dwellings are, the, our building code and our community development code both have definitions for what is a, what is a dwelling, and, and a dwelling has to meet building code requirements. And that's one of the reasons why an RV is not considered a dwelling. It's also the reason why a tiny home on wheels is not considered a dwelling, it's considered a vehicle, because those things cannot meet building code requirements. So, a legal permanent dwelling would be something that can meet building code requirements as a dwelling.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Scowton?
Yeah, I just want to, thank you. I just want to clarify, in terms of the staff's recommendation, would your recommendation then allow for short-term rental at a lot that has two accessory dwelling units and the main residence? Would your recommendation allow one, two, or three? I, I understand, maybe three? Is that correct?
Yeah, we're not, at this point, staff has not arrived at a recommendation. We're simply recognizing, you know, our, one of our first recommendations is that short-term rentals be legal permanent dwellings only. But then, that still leaves the case where you've got a lot in a single-family residential neighborhood that could have three legal permanent dwellings, and so should we allow all three to be short-term rentals? Or should we, or should we have some kind of a cap? I mean, in a way, it gets a little bit back to some of these other issues. We talked about parking. Well, if all three of these things would be short-term rentals, then all three of them would have to meet whatever parking requirement we set, you know, for short-term rental, potentially. So, it's, it, it's sort of, I think, as staff was looking at it, it was sort of like, how much of an impact on the neighborhood would it ha, would it be to have a single property that has a home and two accessory dwelling units, for all three of those to operate as short-term rentals? Would that have a more negative impact than if all three of those dwellings were occupied by long-term occupants, or not? You know, so that's the kind of thing we're wrestling with as we're looking at, whether we need to put some sideboards on that scenario.
Now, is it also possible to have a system whereby those things would be decided on a case-by-case, lot-by-lot basis through perhaps a hearings officer, or that type of thing, or staff?
Well, we're, we, we got sort of our preliminary board direction to look at developing requirements that would allow short-term rentals through a license process, so that would not be a land use review, would not be, there would not be a hearings officer involved. It would be a fairly nondiscretionary process where we lay out requirements, and then, you know.
And it, it may be, if I could just interject here, that if, if the board doesn't have a particular decision on this yet, we could ask this as part of our public open house. It could be a question to get some public input, and then we could bring that back to the board to, to let you know what kind of reaction we've gotten, and, you know, give you a little bit more time to kind of mull it over it. We can look at what some other jurisdictions do, and, and just bring, bring that back.
Thank you, Teresa. I actually like that idea, but I also want to make sure that this is described so that what we're talking about is limiting the short-term rental use. We are not entertaining limiting the long-term rental use. So, that short-term rental, thirty day, right?
That's correct.
So, I think that's really important for us to note. At this point, I'm leaning towards limiting the short-term rental to one dwelling unit per lot, but I look forward to learning more through the public comment period.
Great.
Any other thoughts, commissioners, before we move on?
This one is a tough one for me to really understand, and I appreciate the fact that Suzanne and Teresa are looking toward public comment and considering what the impact on the, the neighborhood is. So, I'm, I'm going to wait and see what happens through the public comment period. So, thank you.
Yeah, I've, I have a personal friend who's been very involved with land use and code changes in the city of Bend, and they studied the impact of short-term rentals, and how they had to grandfather in existing uses, and the impact to communities is definitely there. So, go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Well, yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking about Pam's earlier question about, so what's the problem we're trying to solve here? And I thought the problem was more designed at the parties that were being held, or the large gatherings of people in some of these residences, just a second here.
Well, that is, that is very true. That is the immediate need. But as we move forward, we need to make sure that we fully look at, not just that immediate need, but the broader policy for the community today as we know it, as well as good policy out in future years.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I don't disagree with that either. This is, this is our first kind of attempt to move into this. So, I agree with that. I just don't want to, what do they say? I don't want to use a sledgehammer to kill a fly thing, and so I want to make sure we don't create more problems than we thought we were solving with a too stringent of a policy, as long as we fix the party in residential neighborhoods that, that drove this conversation initially. So, that, that's all I want to make sure we do. I, I don't disagree with, with the direction we're going, and I would agree with you that I'm thinking option A would be where I would land as well. So, we'll wait for the public feedback.
Commissioner Therese, and then Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Chair. I, I also want to underscore the safety issues that exist with, with this, with this situation, and I want to recognize that in the Rock Creek area, we did have a, a big problem and a death related to this issue. So, it's, it's really important. I appreciate the effort, and I just, my one piece of advice is that we consider including safety concepts in this, in this process. The other thing I want to mention is that I've heard this from, especially on volume ten, from the Garden Home CPO. So, I want to make sure that we're getting the word out to all of our, and I understand that you will through our established processes, but I really want to make sure we're communicating with the CPOs that have had this issue right in front of their face for a long time. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll be sensitive to the timing of the public comment period, particularly as we head into the holidays, and I want to make sure that both our urban unincorporated outreach, as well as the rural outreach, allows for enough time for input. Commissioner Rogers?
Not sure whether this is for Suzanne or Andy, but we're thinking of, of people who own properties, who rent to a secondary party for a short-term period. What if people, our organizations rent their parking lots out for housing, or let's say a heating shelter, or a homeless shelter for short periods of time? Are we at all impacted, any of this, by activities that are for short-term, but maybe not a single-family unit, but I guess they could be, and it could be multiple people involved? Are any of these going to be impacted?
Um, I'm not sure with your question, Commissioner Rogers, if you're talking about, I mean, the scope of what we're discussing today is, is renting out, you know, a dwelling as a short-term rental, you know, to occupy thirty days or less. I don't, with the, those other scenarios you gave, I'm not sure if you were thinking whether those would fall under the same umbrella. I would think that they would be different.
I'm asking, so if, so if somebody has a dwelling, a, a small dwelling, but they have a large lot, and they want to rent it out to some group, or short-term use for other purposes, it could be a homeless camp, it could be lots of things. Does this at all prohibit that kind of usage, or does this get entangled? Would there be any problem? And not, not all, not all single-family homes are in, you know, neighborhoods that are just single-family homes. Some of them are in business areas, as we know. So, they could be commercial properties that, sometimes they are a single-family home, sometimes they're small commercial, sometimes they're other things. I mean, so are we, are we going to get into any entanglement? Are we going to say very specifically this is to do with single occupied family homes?
I think we're going to be doing the latter. We're going to be making this very distinct. The license process and the allowance is going to be very distinct.
I would, I would add that earlier this year, you had the ordinance that had to do with providing opportunities for folks living in cars or other vehicles to park in parking lots in institutional uses, but we didn't allow that in residential districts. So, similar, similar concept, but we wouldn't allow that in the residential land use districts right now.
Just to follow up, to be very specific, because we've been talking about single-family homes. I hadn't heard about the district issue. So, this is in residential districts only, and that's going to be very specific.
Correct.
All right, okay.
All right, the next couple of slides are going to be about the rural area, and then we're going to sort of start to, start doing some wrap-up. But we looked at the rural area, we looked at short-term rental allowances with regard to the rural area separately, because there are different regulations and state law requirements that apply in the rural area. In the rural area, we've got two different types of land categories. One of them is called resource lands, and these are rural lands that meet the definition and criteria in statewide planning goal three, which is agricultural lands, or statewide planning goal four, which is forest lands. Generally, these are large parcels of twenty acres or more, and they have plan designations of exclusive farm use, exclusive forest conservation, and agriculture and forestry, AF20. And there are state requirements in place in both the Oregon administrative rules and the Oregon revised statutes that limit the allowed uses on these lands in order to conserve them for farm and forest uses. And non-farm and non-forest uses are permitted only when they're not in conflict with agriculture and forest activities. Residential uses are limited in these districts to those permitted by the Oregon revised statutes and Oregon administrative rules. And this map, this shows a, a chunk of the county's rural area that's just to the south and west of Forest Grove. And so, the various shades, there are three shades of green here, and those properties in the three shades of green are resource lands. The tax lot lines are shown, so you can start to get an idea that a lot of these are pretty large properties, especially when you use Hag Lake as the comparison for like size, and you look at some of the properties around there. Some of them are quite large, but they're usually at least twenty acres in size, and sometimes a lot larger. The other category of rural lands that we have are called exception lands, and these were determined by the county to be accepted from the requirements of goal three and goal four. And they're generally smaller pieces of land, and they're generally smaller than twenty acres. A lot of them are smaller than ten acres. The determination to accept them from those goals was made because the lands had been developed or committed to small-scale rural development, like small acreage home sites or smaller non-commercial farms. And these exception lands have designations of agriculture and forestry AF10, agriculture and forestry AF5, and rural residential five. And they're shown on this map, too. They're in the brown and the yellow colors, and you can kind of see their cluster, their sort of clumps or clusters of, of these. sort of clumps or clusters of these exception land properties. And they're small. You can tell from the tax lot lines that a lot of these are smaller properties. In these districts, the primary permitted uses are residential dwellings, accessory structures, and farm and forestry activities. So, with that as sort of a backdrop, we'll kind of move to the next slide and talk about how guest accommodations are currently allowed in these areas. So, right now in the rural exception lands on those smaller parcels, guest accommodations in the county are allowed through a type-one home occupation for bed and breakfast. And this is a land use application. It's a type-one, which means that it has a shorter processing time, fairly inexpensive application fee. The requirement is for the owner or operator of the bed and breakfast to live in the home. So, that means that the entire house cannot be rented out to guests. The only part of the house can be rented out. And the home occupation standards limit the number of guests to five people and also don't allow the use of the outdoor areas. And so, next slide, please.
Use of the outdoor areas is not allowed for what?
For anything, in terms of the home occupation.
So, they can't go sit outside?
Well, I'm not sure how the county would enforce that. But, to be honest, I'm not sure how the county would enforce that. But that is, in the requirements for home occupations, there is a prohibition on using outdoor areas part of the home occupation.
Okay.
Except for events, most.
It's totally unclear from the sound of it.
Yeah, in this case, that's probably how the county would construe it, is that events would not be able to be held outside in conjunction with the bed and breakfast. So, for rural resource lands, those larger parcels that are exclusive forest conservation or farm use, the guest accommodations are not allowed in the exclusive forest conservation district pretty much at all. Guest accommodations may be allowed in the exclusive farm use and agriculture and forest AF-20 districts through two different paths. One of them is a type-two home occupation for bed and breakfast in conjunction with a winery. So, this is only for parcels that have a winery or are proposing a winery. They are then able to request a bed and breakfast use in conjunction with that. And again, the use of outdoor areas is not allowed, and the guests are limited to five people. The other land use path is a type-two room and board application. And this requires the operator, when they're submitting this land use application, to provide findings that the use will not force a significant change in accepted farm or forest practices, or significantly increase the cost of accepted farm or forest practices on surrounding lands that are devoted to farm and forest use. And those findings are called the impact test. That's sort of like the term that the county uses to refer to them quickly. We call them the impact test findings. And guests, again, are limited to five people. So, there's these two land use paths that are available. So, that's the current allowance. And so, next slide, please. So, at this point, and this is something that we wanted to get the board's thoughts on, too, but at this point, just based on this information that we've been reviewing, staff does not recommend allowing short-term rentals through a license process in the rural area because of these reasons. Because in the rural exception lands, the community development code already has a land use path to allow guest accommodations. And in the exclusive farm use zones, the Oregon revised statutes and the community development code require land use approval for guest accommodations. And in the exclusive forest conservation zones, the Oregon administrative rules and the community development code do not allow guest accommodations. So, we surveyed other counties on how or whether they allowed short-term rentals in their rural exception or resource lands, and their approaches varied. At least two of the counties that we surveyed took an approach similar to what staff is currently thinking, which is that requiring guest accommodations in rural exception and resource lands should be approved only through land use applications. But we are open to the board's thoughts on this. And this is sort of a, I recognize this is sort of a bigger top, this is sort of a bigger topic, but we are definitely open to the board's thoughts on this as well. So, I'll pause there for a moment. The next thing I was going to go to after this was just talking about the next steps in the development of the licensing requirements. But I'll just pause at this moment to see if there are comments about the rural area.
This is Commissioner Scouten. Just kind of curious what approach this Yan Hill County does with respect to their wine country.
Um, I will, they were one of the jurisdictions that I believe had a bed and breakfast, allowed short-term rentals in their jurisdiction only through a bed and breakfast land use approval. So, they don't, they don't have a separate sort of category just for short-term rentals. They're kind of similar to Washington County, I guess, in that respect.
Commissioners, any other questions or thoughts on this category? I'll say that I think that the current approach, as outlined in these three slides, is a very thoughtful one. Particularly when it comes to our rural areas, it's very hard, once you go down a path and see impact to agriculture and forest land, it's hard to reel that back in. I have not yet received feedback from folks that say that the current process is abhorrent. So, I think it seems to be working pretty well. And so, I appreciate the recommendation of stick to what you've got and go from there. And we'll see what we learn moving forward through public comment on the recommendations for change for the UUAs. But I appreciate how you've clearly laid it out. Any other Commissioner thoughts at this point? Okay, seeing none and looking at the clock. Suzanne, could you take us forward?
All right, so we're almost done. So, next slide, oh yeah, great. So, this is sort of like the recap of the questions that we had asked today in these slides, and we've gotten some comments on some of these. Are there additional license requirements that should be included? How many onsite parking spaces should be required? We got feedback on that. In the single-family residential areas for lots that have more than one dwelling, should the number of rentals be limited to one per lot? We got some preliminary feedback, and we'll ask about that at the virtual open house as well. And then, you know, just now, should rural guest accommodations be limited to current allowances and state law on the CDC? And it looked like we got just preliminary comments about that as well. So, my next slide just talks about the next.
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, sure.
So, I just want to double-check with Commissioners. So, at this juncture, there aren't any other additional licensing requirements that you want staff to proactively propose to the public or be prepared for input on? Okay, seeing none, on to the next slide. Thank you Suzanne.
All right. So, next steps is that we're going to continue to refine the draft license requirements. And then, we're going to be soliciting public comment on the draft license requirements through a virtual open house. And the thought is that the virtual open house would happen in early December. We're thinking probably the first week in December. And the public comment would be allowed, I believe, for a 30-day period. People couldn't, people could move into the, move into and through the open house, you know, from the convenience of their home computer and leave comments at any point during that 30-day period. And we are working with our communications staff on making sure that all the CPOs will be alerted in advance of the, of the open house, that that is coming, and that we're going to be getting the word out in, you know, as wide a way as we can. And I believe we're also looking at some avenues for making sure that the virtual open house is communicated, you know, in Spanish as well to get the word out there. So, that's to come. And then, after the virtual open house is held, and we've had, collected the public feedback over the 30-day period, we would then come back to the board at a future work session and review the comments that we received. And we'd probably have some proposals for refining the license requirements that we'd want to discuss with the board. And then, after that, we would then bring short-term rental code amendments to the board for consideration at one or more public hearings. And I want to note that we think most of the proposed requirements would live in the county code. There might be some amendments we might need to make to the community development code, but the bulk of the amendments would probably be in the county code, which is, you know, prior to our voting results, we were sort of concerned about what if we had to make amendments to both documents? Would we have to time things differently? But now that the ordinance season doesn't apply to community development code amendments, it looks like we could go forward with amendments to both documents in potentially, I think in potentially one ordinance, or at least at the same time. So, that's what's coming up. And greatly appreciated being able to review this with the board today.
Commissioner questions? Commissioner Teresa?
I just want to say thank you for the work that you put into this and the fact that this is such an important issue for many of our, many of our residents. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into this, and I look forward to hearing back what the public comment is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner questions or comments at this time? Commissioner Scouten, are you still there? Just want to make sure I'm not missing you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, it doesn't look like anybody else has any comments, so I'll wrap up. I'm a little sensitive to this public comment period. The timeframe of it, 30 days, by itself seems pretty reasonable. But we do still live in somewhat turbulent times. And I want to make sure that we do have a lot of notification out to both the urban unincorporated areas, but also our adjoining cities and the rural areas on this. And so, towards that end, I'm thinking either I'd like to see the comment period extend out into January, or perhaps another, I'm just talking ideas here. Another idea would be to send notification out now, heads up. We're going to have a public comment period. You know, here it is November 10th. So, try to push that message out this week especially, right? So that people have a heads up at least a full week before the Thanksgiving week to know that, hey, you got to get this in your plans in December, which is a short month, right? By itself. And there are a bunch of CPOs that I don't know if they will be meeting in December or not. So, by giving the heads up, that might help. And then, go from there. I'm not going to insist that the public comment period extend into January. Rather, I just want to raise that I'm concerned about that, and will certainly do my part to get the word out and go from there. Does that seem reasonable?
Sure.
All righty.
I think so. This is Commissioner Scouten, yes.
Okay, great. Well, that's it from, direction from the board. Thank you, Stephen, to your staff, Mr. Back, Teresa Cherniack, and Suzanne Savin for looking into this and taking us through this today. Great, thank you, and stay healthy, everyone. We're now going to move on to our next topics. Both of the remaining topics are related to transportation. So, we now have up at the table Christine Deffenbach, along with continuing Stephen Roberts. You talked with us about the statewide transportation improvement program, 2024 to 2027. Wow, we're thinking out that far already. May we move 2020 along as fast as possible. So, welcome, take us through it.
Okay, thank you Chair and the Commissioners that I can see there.
Chris, get closer to the mic.
Oh, all right, thank you. All right, it's, can you hear it with the mask? Yeah, right? A little closer.
Our technicians have the opportunity to turn volume up as.
That's all right, okay. Okay, so, thank you for the time today. What, we are here to talk about the 24, 27, three-year investment scenarios for the statewide transportation improvement program. And if you go to the next slide, the goals for today are to share information about the statewide transportation improvement program, so you know more about it, and seek your input on the investment scenarios that the Oregon Transportation Commission is currently considering in their allocation of 2.2 billion for the fiscal years of 24 to 27. The Oregon Transportation Commission, they do this every three years, but there is a little bit different this time. They are seeking more input specifically from the area commissions on transportation. And we have two representatives here, one on the, from the board members, one of the Northwest Act, and the other one on the Region One Act. And this discussion can inform our participation, and there will be more discussion about this in other forums as well. This is the beginning of the process, so one of the questions we also have for you is your interest in continued weighing in along the way. But before we start, I just want to manage expectations. This is a statewide program, and the Northwest Act is seeking input. There are like 30 people at that table alone, and you can just imagine that the state, the Oregon Transportation Commission, has an unenviable job of trying to figure out allocations across the diverse state. And then, another little spoiler alert is that there isn't enough money to do everything in this. So, it, but the input today and the discussion today, is it really the beginning of questions that we are all going to be asked more, particularly with our government relations team in terms of statewide legislative priorities, federal reauthorization priorities, and things such as how to prioritize tolling revenue? So, it's kind of a starter discussion. So, just to go to the next slide, just to remind you, when we say the state system, it is a big statewide system. In Washington County here, you can see the, between Highway 6 to the coast, Highway 26, Highway 47, we have a lot of state routes within the county. But also, it's so intertwined with our system that our county system and the city system really couldn't work without an integrated state system. And our residents, they hardly know, I mean, it's often not sure whose jurisdiction the road is. And so, the safety affects all of our residents. And then, of course, this is just a picture of our region. We know that the state system helps the county with goods going all across the state interstate. So, it's really much, it's a much bigger picture. So, I want to start then to the next slide, just by talking about what is the statewide transportation improvement program. And it really identifies where to spend the state and federal dollars that come to the state. It's updated every three years. It is approved by the Oregon Transportation Commission after a three-year process with multiple public input points. And in the end, the projects in the metro area are then. projects in the metro area are then adopted into the Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program. So they get adopted twice, really, in the metro area. So I mentioned the three year process. If you go to the next slide, the first step is the one we're in right now, is allocating among various categories and programs. Then there is a long two year process of allocating those funds to projects. And then a final public review of those projects before it's before the end in 2023. I think if you go to the next slide, it's kind of a we are here. We're at the end of November here, reviewing the results of the work that the ODOT staff has done in terms of considering the various investment options. And the Oregon Transportation is is scheduled to make an allocation decision on December 1. And we learned yesterday that they are going to stick to that plan despite a request from both the Region One Act and J-PAC to delay for more time for consideration. So the Region One Act is having a special meeting on November 23 to consider their comments to forward off to the Oregon Transportation Commission. And all members have been asked to submit comments this week to fold into that process. And then the Northwest Act is meeting later this week on November 12 to review their input and share input on the statewide transportation improvement program. So again, it happens every three years. What is different about this time? Well, there's more public input this time, where there's been several online surveys. In fact, there's an online survey open right now that closes on November 16 that that the public is widely encouraged to participate in. There are more options for consideration. Usually, the OTC considers either a fix it or enhance, and I'll define those options. Now there are more options, and part of this is responding to the governor's order on considering greenhouse gas and greenhouse gas reductions. So if you turn to the next slide, so just to frame this a little bit more, there's about 2.2 billion on the table for allocation. And it's important to think about what is is made up of the state gas tax and the federal funds that come to the state. But there's a lot that's not included here. It doesn't include funds from the Federal Transit Administration. It doesn't include the Connect Oregon Funds for rails, airports, and ports and aviation. It only includes of the non-highway funds. It doesn't include about a quarter of the total because it doesn't include anything which we're going to talk about later from the statewide transportation investment fund for transit services. And it doesn't include all the allocations that go to state and local governments, which we also get other funds outside of the STIP process. So but it's still a good chunk of funds. And it is also, it includes basically, if you think about this, is the construction projects. Okay, so for the next slide, so I've already started to use some of these terms. So I want to just define them a little bit more. Enhance means to expand or enhance the highway system. This doesn't include adding lanes or interchange improvements. Fix it is really maintaining or fixing the system. It doesn't include operations like tree trimming, because remember, this is construction projects. These are traditionally bridges, culverts, and paving, but they're really, as we'll see, they're much more than that, too. There's allocation of safety funds focused on reducing fatal and serious crashes. Non-highway is the term that allocates the bicycle pedestrian and public transportation options that can't, some of these can be off road. And local programs, which I think the best known is the, this is where there's some targeted funding for local bridge improvements that goes through this. And then there's other functions that include a wide range of ODOT's responsibilities. So that's some of the terms. So now I'll just walk you through quickly the investment scenarios. I'm going to keep this at a high level. So there are five investment scenarios that the Oregon Transportation Commission is considering. And just the, it's the line, the bottom line, that solid line, the stuff that's, the options that are in play are above that line. And you can see, they're actually above the dotted line. And you can see that there's really about a total of about 180 million in play between these scenarios. So it's less than 10% of the total budget that that's in play. So if we walk through these options, the first one is called adjusted baseline, is basically what the OTC approved in for the 2124 STIP. But it also, it's a little bit different because some of the enhanced dollars that went into it from HB 2017 have been drawn down a little bit. But it's pretty much what was there before. And in the adjusted baseline, that dark blue is about 71% is in fix it. And then it's like nine or 10% for the three other ones, non-highway, safety, and enhance. Then if you go to the left, it's the enhance option. This increases the amount of funding for enhance up to and and safety, non-highway up to about 14%. And it reduces the fix it allocation from 58% to 71%. So all of these options come out of the fix it dollars. If you move further to the right, you have the non-highway. Again, the fix it is at that lower amount. Enhance and safety are about the same at the nine and 10% range. And then the nine highway, non-highway goes up to about 22%. So that's where the big increase is there. The next one is a combination that that increases both the safety and non-highway to around 15 or 16%. Keeps enhance about the same. And again, the fix it's at that same line. The final option increases the fix it to 76% and keeps enhance and safety about the same as the baseline, around nine or 10%. And the highway is reduced down to 5%. You can see all the scenarios are really tied to more or less fix it. So that's a key value is what what is the what is the value placed on the on the fix it. So just one more slide before I start talking about, yes.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Could you just remind me what adjusted baseline is?
That's the, that's very similar to what was in the in the 2124, except that the enhance is a little bit lower because some of the enhanced monies in 2124 came out of HB 2017, and some of those monies have been drawn down.
Thank you.
Okay, one more slide, or two more slides about the state work and then sort of shifting into how it relates to how we might think about this and some of the counties' values and guidelines. So the, as I said earlier, the ODOT has really expanded their evaluation using a values based approach that reflects climate mitigation, also climate adaptation, which is also a statewide framework being developed now. And then the rest of the measures should also look pretty familiar, congestion, equity, multimodal mobility, safety, and the state of good repair. And that's really a, which, which, as we know, that ties into the fiscal, because we know that if maintenance is deferred, it can cost more to do it. So in the next slide, we see the very high level results of the evaluation that ODOT completed. And as you can see, find my notes here. So the the fix it has, does not do as well with the greenhouse gas and the congestion relief as compared to the enhance, the social equity because it's not targeted to non-highway bike ped transit improvements, same with multimodal mobility, does better on the state of good repair. The safety, you can see, I think they're pretty self explanatory. The enhance does better on congestion relief and safety because of the links there in those improvements. And then non-highway doesn't do as much for the climate adaptation because those, a lot of those investments are in the fix it category, but addresses the bicycle pedestrian and non-highway needs better in both the multimodal and social equity categories. So that's very high level summary. But if, but are there, because what I'd like to turn to next is some of the considerations that that we can think, what we've, that I propose, we consider about in 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 weighing what is important to the county. So, yes.
I could just ask a clarifying question. I find it interesting to see that climate, greenhouse, gas mitigation, and climate adaptation resilience.
Mm-hmm.
In two cases, non-highway and fix it, they're the opposite of one another. And that caused me some pause here. It's not self evident to me why in S2, non-highway, that would be the case. I can sort of get it with fix it.
Mm-hmm. It is with fix it. As I understand it, it is the opportunity to address the seismic needs, culverts, other sizing, landslides.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So the next, the next question is, well, what's in our transportation system plan to turn to for guidance? And I think the the upshot is, is that all of ODOT's measures are included in our transportation system plan as goals. So one of the points is that the our overarching goals address, there's four of them, safety, economic vitality, livability, and the natural environment, which includes greenhouse gas reductions. We've asterisked equity here because while that's part of all of the TSP efforts, goals, we starred this because that is the one that has risen as a priority with the DEI resolution that the board approved. So the system, we also, the TSP lays out design goals, and it also includes implementation and funding goals, which have to do with fiscal stability, the importance of coordinating, and with with the state system, and maintaining the system in a state of good repair. So the next background information on the next slide is just a little bit of a recap of what some of the work we've been doing with on the state system to consider in the fix it category. Our maintenance group has been working with ODOT to identify seismic upgrades on our facilities that could substitute as redundant routes in in the event of an impact on ODOT's facilities. You know, we've sought grants in partnership with ODOT to update fiber optics, signal upgrades, and we hear a lot about the need for illumination. In fact, we've helped fund some of the illumination on TV Highway. Highway 6, we know there, then we've supported the safety improvement needs, the particular communication needs, as that came up a year within the last year. Enhance, there was support for the HB 2017 legislation to fund the three bottlenecks. And then just in the get moving work, the board talked about support for Highway 217 and US 26 improvements, some of those examples. In the next slide, non-highway, we've spent a lot of time talking about TV Highway, multimodal improvements, Southwest Corridor. And we have partnered with a lot of our local jurisdictions with using missed opportunity funds and to help support the development of the trails within the county. Our safety needs, you've heard a lot about these as well, for the need for pedestrian crossings, the rural highways, particularly with the conflicts with bike pads, for the need for shoulders, curves, roundabouts. I think a good example is the recent one that was constructed on Highway 47, the roundabout to address safety needs. So you can see that that there's no end, really, in needs and values for the state system. So that was, so considering that, what I'd like to do is throw out a staff recommendation and comments for discussion. And the the question that came to the ax was, what would you support, what modifications would you suggest for it, and what additional comments would you have? So from a starting point, the baseline appears to support many of the the needs we've seen in our partnership with ODOT because it balances the investments in enhanced safety and non-highway, and continues to honor that commitment to maintain and improve the system. But there are modifications. And the fixes aren't really applied with an equity lens. So there really needs to be, that would be a comment or a modification. The safety allocations could be allocated with more impact. Some of the allocations have been very small locations, improvements instead of more comprehensive. And that gets to the other modification highlighted, as as we've learned from all the work we've done recently, every, if projects take a combination of every pot of funding to be successful. We can see, and TV Highway is a fresh example, that much of the needs there fall into the fix it category for illumination and paving and other upgrades on that facility. We can see that in Southwest Corridor with the big costs in upgrading Barbara Boulevard and the Viaduct there. So, so part of the modification that seems as a comment is to take a more corridor based approach that really looks at the embraces the need for a multimodal system and and reflects that these pots need to come together. I think that could be said better than just that the pots need to come together. But so then the final one is that this is not enough funding and that for the fiscal stability of the of the transportation system, and to really make sure that there is a continued respect for the state of good repair, there really needs to be some additional revenue, whether it's, and it's continued discussions for that. So that, those were our staff thoughts on this. As as we said at the beginning, this is not, you know, it's not going to solve, it's it's one piece of the of the transitation funding, but it is an opportunity to begin to think about what's important. And so that's why we thought it'd be particularly useful to have your discussion on this.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So I'm just going to articulate all three questions from the next slide, but keep this staff recommendation slide up. So the three questions, do you support the staff recommendation? And do you have any comments? Do you have other comments or suggested revisions? And then what additional information would you find helpful in this process? So I don't see any raised hands at this point.
This is Commissioner Scouton. I'm, I think that the staff recommendations are are more or less in line with my my views.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I think it's a good approach. What you have to understand, and I think we all do, that the Area One Act covers four counties, and much of those areas are rural, like you'd experience out in the act that you represent. This is the only pot of money they think they really can get into. So they're going to be heavily into the enhance and in fix it areas. That's what they really want. I think we need to be balanced. So when Chris and I talked about this earlier, we need to be nimble and be able to put our ore in all of the water. I think that we have a multimodal approach. We always have in the county. We need to stress that we need all of those things, everything from non-highway, which is transit and head to, we need some highway changes in terms of enhancement enhancement. There are some safety issues. So I, I think that if we get too stringent and only say that we just want one thing, and I suspect that'll come from other participants other than ourselves, we're going to be competing against a very small pot. Remember, we asked at the act, and I know J-PAC did too, and for an extension of time, this is way too too quick. It's all due to the OTC meeting early December. I got back, I think it was yesterday, the day before, a nice letter from the Chair of OTC thanking me for the letter and simply saying, I appreciate you having a meeting in December. I mean, late November to to try to take this up. It still didn't address the issues that we all wanted more time. So I mean, we're kind of stuck with it. The state said, here's what's going to happen. They picked the five pots. They could have picked others. They could have picked others. They're just asking us, "How much would you put in each of these buckets?" And my vote and word of advice would be to put something in every bucket because we need something in every bucket. So, I support the recommendation.
Commissioner Teresa?
Thank you. And thank you to our transportation group. I've talked with Chris about this. And in my other capacity, I also sit on the Region 1 Act. So, I support everything that Roya said about the diversity geographically of our Region 1 Act. I support the staff recommendations. And I especially appreciate the modifications to include the application of the equity lens. I think that we need to say that loudly. I don't know that, and I want to say it loudly, especially at the Region 1 Act from the standpoint that we may not hear that from other areas. So, I'm concerned about making sure that that concept gets traction. It's a very difficult situation to be in, but I believe that the staff has come forward with a recommendation that meets my expectations. So, thank you.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the agenda for the Northwest Act, which is scheduled for this Thursday at 1:00. And I will be in attendance with that. And I know they're still asking for input for their letter. And so, I need to kind of refresh all of that. Your last point, Chris, is to seek additional revenue to address growing needs. Is that just a blanket statement? Or do you have some specifics that you'd like to maybe have our GR team deliver to our legislators?
Yeah, so, we've been working with Erin Doyle on this. And this is going to come up, that'll come up in the part of the government relations presentations to you. But, we all know that there's not enough money to do everything.
But, you don't have any, I mean, like, you're not recommending, I don't know why gas tax isn't more of a, why it's so, such a sensitive area and so difficult to get through. I mean, in the 2017 transportation package, didn't they spread that over, like, till 2023? And really, it didn't, wasn't going to make all that much impact? Refresh my memory on that, will you?
I'd have to look it up. I thought it was 2022. It came in in pieces, I remember that.
Yeah, there was a staged increase. I think it was six cents overall, or maybe eight.
Two cents each three-year, I can't remember either.
Yeah, when we really needed 15 cents or something, didn't we? It was kind of a small attempt.
Well, and as I know, I recall from those days, a lot of it had to do with the fact that the needs outside of our counties, so in the more rural, entirely rural counties of Oregon, they only have so many facilities. And so, legislators from those areas carried a lot of weight because they didn't want to see the gas tax raised at a level beyond what their need was. We have a similar situation that happens with education funding as well. So, we end up coming down to the most common denominator in that regard. Go ahead, Commissioner Scouton, and then I'll finish up.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo or re-echo Commissioner Teresa's comments. I think the equity piece is important. I think, just a little more detail on that. Equity in terms of with a greater emphasis on safety and with an emphasis, I think necessarily, on the public transportation and access to public transportation facilities that allow for that. And also, to be mindful about locations and projects that will negatively impact in terms of air quality, land use, livability, you know, communities of color because we have unfortunately a very, very long history of using major highway projects as a way to divide communities and for communities of color to suffer much of the negative consequences of large rural projects and not really enjoy the benefits of, on the plus side of these projects. So, and certainly, all of the controversy that's playing out around the Rose Quarter, I think is probably a good example of that kind of past damage and history. So, I think the emphasis that's, the new emphasis being placed on equity, I think we should, as a county, play a significant role in forcing that point of view and doing what we can to make sure that that's reflected in the allocation decisions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. I appreciate the refinements that staff has offered through their recommendation. I'm fully backed that. With regard to other comments and suggestions, it's very clear that we need more resources. And without more resources for transportation, there are economic consequences and consequences to continued quality of life here in the entire state of Oregon. Lastly, I don't need to remind my colleagues who are serving as the county representatives to these two acts that this is the time and place for us as a board to direct them on their comments as representative for our two acts. The Northwest Act specifically covers the land area that is most definitely in my district, so to speak. And I would like to make it very clear that the same aspects that our staff is recommending with regard to the urban, more urban part of our area and the metro jurisdiction, those very same conditions apply to our rural communities as well. Our rural cities, but also, our rural residents use these state highways. And these state highways do go through rural clusters. So, the fix-it, safety, and non-highway funds bring value to our more rural areas as well. So, this set of recommendations, I believe, applies to both of the acts for which Washington County participates in. And I appreciate my colleagues continuing to endure the discussions that are taking place and will continue to take place at those committee tables as there's discussion on, once again, this limited pie or this limited resource pool, excuse me, not pie, but this resource pool that can only, its size to only do so much. I don't think it's reasonable for us to be spending that much more time on this. It's, we're being good stewards of the public money, but if we just keep spending more time discussing and debating, we real, I really question the return on investment. So, thank you for moving forward thoughtfully with this recommendation.
I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity to hear from everyone.
Good job today. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, and now we have our last topic for the day, the Public Transportation Improvement Plan priorities.
All right. So, we're going to go from STIF to STIF. And I think it's, I guess it's a good thing to have these both on at the same time. So, what we're going to cover today is the, if you go to the first slide, thank you, is you'll remember that early this year, your board approved Transit Committee membership and bylaws. I think that was in June. And they have been meeting, and they now have recommendations, their charges to develop transit priorities for the STIF funding. So, they have now prepared their recommendations. And so, the purpose of today is to review those. And what we would be doing is seeking your support at a thumbs-up level to forward them to TRIMET for inclusion in the three-county Public Transportation Improvement Plan that will then be considered by TRIMET's committee. So, it goes through, it's the next step in a series of processes. And I'll go through all of those. Next thing is, we'll review this step, the processes both for finalizing these transit priorities, oops, and then the process for future board actions for you coming up. So, as a background, thank you. So, this is the Statewide Transportation Improvement Fund, STIF, not P for program, fund. And it provides the transit funding to serve key goals of reducing service fragmentation and serve low-income rural communities and students. There's also some elements in there about promoting greenhouse gas reductions with no emission vehicles. We purchased some electric vehicles recently with Ride Connection. And also, low fares and Ride Connection services are free. So, just, it's a, these are some of the key goals. And the county received funding in FY, the other, it's like, two and a half years of funding through fiscal year, the second half of 19 through 21. And that is when we completed our contract with Ride Connection to provide the services. So, the next background, now is the time that we need to be submitting our request for the next biennium of state funding. So, we are scheduled to propose funding for the FY 22, 23 transit priorities. And I already covered that part about, that you've already pointed that committee. The committee met four times. It was chaired by Chair Harrington. I have to say, I thought the discussions and input were invaluable. They were all, it was a great group, provided lots of great insight. And they considered, we talked about the demographics in the county, travel patterns, ridership data. They brought their own personal experiences, and we were able to share public comment from our online survey and other surveys for public comment.
I'd really like to give a shout-out to the committee, but also to the Washington County Daves.
Yeah.
Disability, Aging, and Veteran Services Team for bringing their survey as well as Ride Connection. There was a lot of great information sharing and discussion.
Yeah, that was true. So, in terms of the next slide, the, this is really a time of uncertainty, as you know. And so, we spent quite a bit of time talking about how you plan in this environment. And the guiding principles that the committee is comfortable moving forward with include assuming the high-revenue forecast for our plan, for our budgets that we submit. If it's not in the budget, you can't spend it. And so, we want to start there. But also, plan for uncertainty. We know that we may not get all the funding that is forecast, and the cost may increase. In the past, with COVID, we got some CARES funding to help cover some of the Ride Connections additional costs for the cleaning and the social distancing and all. So, if there's no more CARES spending, we could be hit with that. And just in general, preserve the existing services before expanding. And then, as we move forward, monitor and phase in the services. You don't want to spend all your money and then find you have to cut it all in '24, '25. And as you heard earlier, that we're going to have a continued time for uncertainty here. So, with those sort of guiding principles, the Transit Committee's recommendations, and you have in the packet a list of these as attachments, as an attachment. So, just to highlight them, the West Link is that last mile connecting shuttle that goes between Banks, North Plains, Forest Grove, and Hillsboro. And soon, Ride Connection will be expanding midday service there with the STIF funding that we currently have. And so, the recommendations are to maintain that funding and then go ahead and add either a weekend or earlier or later service and as with the funding, with additional funding that we will have. The next category is a rural demand response. This is that door-to-door service that Ride Connection offers. And again, we are expanding the size of the area that that is applicable or eligible. And so, the first thing is to maintain that. But also, we heard a lot of ideas about how that service could be delivered more efficiently using technology and also to improve customer service. So, we're going to continue to explore options to improve those services. Interregional coordination, this is with our adjacent counties, particularly Columbia County, Yamhill, and Tillamook. And there is a great deal of interest to provide better connections to the coast, you know, that we heard from folks. And so, we are currently working with all three of those counties to try to find ways to improve connections. And potentially, Tillamook may be expanding a route midday, for example. And that means that Ride Connection can then improve those connections. So, the other parts of the recommendations is the Rural Workforce Shuttle. Ride Connection has been working with the Centro and other employers to do kind of a reverse commute shuttle, to go from the urban area to serve the agricultural and other workers out in the rural area. So, that will start within this fiscal year. So, our goal will be to maintain that. And then, we expect to learn a lot once that service launches and want the flexibility to expand and adjust it to meet the community needs. The next one is the regional coordination. This is a funny name, but it's really those last miles. This is the Grove Link, Twelton Shuttle, North Hillsville Shuttle. We will be, this is the funding that comes from TRIMET. They have forecast of funding at a fixed level, the FY 21 levels, for the next two years. We're happy to have that funds, and we will be contributing some of our additional funds to make sure that we cover those costs for those services and then take the opportunity to expand it. This is, last week or the week before, you, your board approved a support for our grant. We have a statewide transportation improvement fund grant in the works now to expand the shuttle, the Twelton Shuttle portion of this to better connect with the Quackamas County services. So, that's, we're hopeful to expand that. And then, we heard a lot about marketing, the need to increase the awareness of the service and improve ease of use. We've made some progress on that this year, this fiscal year, but we have more to do on that. We have ongoing administration. We have thick guidelines for our compliance reporting and monitoring that we continue to track and stay on top of. And then, capital improvements. This can include some of the technology improvements, improvements at bus stops, fleet, charging stations for those electric sedans that we purchased. And again, we have a grant that we submitted to, for the statewide transportation improvement fund, provide additional funds to jumpstart. Particularly, we heard a lot about needs for comfort, like the place to sit and recognition of where the bus stops are. So, this will go a long way to pair with particularly the access for old adults, persons with the disabilities as well as the marketing and just the visibility. Finally, the last category of funding is some funding to continue the planning, to do the feasibility studies, to try to continue to improve service. And then, we'll be back in three years, is that, probably two years, to update the transit development plan that identify the transit priorities for the next biennium, if you can believe it, '24, '25. So, those were their comments. Are there any questions about that before I move on to the next steps?
Commissioners, any questions on these recommendations? I know I found the handout really helpful. See no questions? Go right ahead, Chris.
Okay, so first, I'm going to cover this next process for the STIF, and then I'll come back to the board steps. So, today, we're looking for a thumbs-up to submit these off to TRIMET for their action next Friday, I guess, to look at.
Commissioners?
Thumbs, I'm counting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. So, that moves forward to the committee that Commissioner Rogers sits on at the Three-County Committee. And then, in December, the TRIMET Board will act on this public transportation improvement plan and get ready to submit it to the Oregon Department of Transportation. And then, next steps, next slide. Then, we have some more work to do. We have to take all of this and fill out complete detailed budgets for each of these. So, we have some work to do before February 1st to hand that in in terms of what, that's when the final product goes forward to ODOT. In early '21, ODOT's committees will review it and make their recommendations. will review it and make their recommendations. And I think it's by May that the Oregon Transportation Commission is expected to act on these in time for the next fiscal year. So, next steps for the board. So we will be back in January with the, to seek your action on the first transit development plan that meets the standards requirements in the statewide transportation improvement fund guidance. And it will be not only these, a way for you to act on officially these priorities, but also five-year needs. And that five-year needs is particularly helpful to give a green light for if any other future funding becomes available, that we have, need to have something in our plans. It will also cover the demographic, ridership, and other data that the Transit Committee saw during their forum meetings. So it'll pull that all together with our revenue forecasts. So we'll know how much money we have and document that. And then it will also provide the public comment summary for all of the input that we've had, including the DAV survey that the chair mentioned, our online survey, and summaries from Ride Connections and other input. Then we'll be back in, I think it'll be June. It could, I think it'll be June, but for, to amend our agreement with, our IGA with TRIMET, as they pass through these funds to us, because the funds go to TRIMET and then come to us. And then we'll need to amend our Ride Connection agreement to provide this additional scope of services. And then hopefully, if we get any of those two grants that we've applied for, there will be an additional contract coming to you for approval to accept those funds and entered agreements with Ride Connection. So that's coming ahead. And then we're halfway through '21. So the last, it sounds like we already got the thumbs up for those committee, Transit Committee recommendations. And then, I've outlined when we'll be back to you. If you'd like any more information from us along the ways, anywhere in between there, just let us know.
Commissioners, any questions or thoughts on the next steps for all of this?
No, thank you. Thank you for your work on this, Chris, and Chair, thank you for your work as well.
Commissioner Willie?
Just a quick question. I know TRIMET, obviously, is having financial issues. Is that going to impact any of the commitments they made to this?
TRIMET preserved the allocation for the regional coordination funds to us, or the committee that they have, preserved those funds for us. There will, they are, as you know, they have been working through cuts and trying to keep their service going. So there could be other system-wide changes. They'll be expanding more slowly. So there's a range of things that TRIMET itself will have to do with their services. But they preserved the funding they allocated to us.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
No, not at all. Thank you, Chris. We've sat through a lot of meetings on this, at least at the area that we're involved with, not so much Washington County, but the tri-county area. And Jerry, you asked a great question. That, in talking with TRIMET, they certainly have funds available currently. But just as a little teaser in the back of your mind, and not to really go on at all today with it, but what is the future of public transit? If people start working from home and we start having the technology, are our roads and systems going to be more occupied with small electrical vehicles and not necessarily single fan, single bus? Where are we going? And I don't have any idea. But it's an interesting, interesting look at the future as to our investments and how they're going to be looked at. I do know, talking with TRIMET a bit, they're completely cognizant of that and saying, they're not certain how it might work in the future. Will we all have just small, two-seater cars that, instead of taking a public transit, that will take that, and that, or major trips will take light rail or something like that. But you've asked a great question. It's a futuristic one.
Well, if I could re-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. If I could respond to that just a little bit, yeah. I mean, obviously, we've read where TRIMET, public transit ridership is way down, and TRIMET's struggling with a lot of red ink. But I have also, because my son is moving this past weekend, and so, and he lives up on Sylvan, and it seems like every time I pull on the Barnes Road, I come behind a bus. And that bus, I don't think has stopped at one bus stop all the way up Barnes from St. Bees Clear to where it drops over. And that, to me, that was just an indicator of, there's only a few people on those buses, and so they're really struggling. I know that. And they're going to have to come up with kind of an alternate plan as well. I was happy, though, to hear what Chris said, that they had committed those funds and locked them away, and I hope they continue that.
Commissioner Scoughton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the staff recommendations with respect to the transit priorities for the PTIP. And thank you, Christine, for your ongoing clueware.
So I'll close with, as I have taken transit just recently, a couple of times, through the conditions of this pandemic, it is very clear to me that we continue to have transit-dependent riders throughout our community. What this pandemic has highlighted is that the choice riders, especially those who can afford their own vehicles, are a key audience that we have lost. I know I was really impressed by the safety, COVID safety protocols that TRIMET has in place. And as congestion is already felt, traffic levels are at 90% of what they were pre-pandemic, we may yet see choice riders returning. Though as we continue to be asking employers to support telecommuting, we're, we're not seeing that right now. So we need to be careful to drawing too many conclusions during the course of these unique times. And we shall, shall see what happens once we have a vaccine fully deployed in our community as well. One thing you can rely upon for the future is that it will be different than what we know today. So I'm certainly open to all of that as we move ahead. Thank you, Chris, to you and your team for staffing the Transit Committee for this. I think all of the committee members appreciated the level of engagement, the level of information, and the effort that had put in with the public comment period as well.
I'd like to thank you for chairing it, and to all of the board for their comments today, and particularly give a shout out to Erin Wardell and her team with Diami Valentine, Reza, and Julia Sosnovsky, who really have put a lot into this, and of course, our partnership with Ride Connection.
Great. So that's it for today's agenda. Do commissioners have any last comments before we adjourn the work session for today, November 10th? Nope, seeing none. Commissioner Scoughton, I can't see you on camera. I do hope that you will continue to have an enjoyable vacation. And don't do too much work, please. Point of getting away-
Okay, I'll try not to.
Is to get away.
Thanks for joining us, Dick. And also, Chair, I'd like to add, please stay safe. Do all the things that we've heard. Wash your hands, wear your mask, physically distance, and get your flu shot. So my last, my last public health message. I'm going to the fact tonight, so I'll be, I'll be there. But please take, take good care of yourselves.
Great. Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, well done, Chris. Yeah, we, we went long on all of our items, I think.
But it's noon.